East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Thank you, LTV. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Plaid?
Present.
So then the least?
Present.
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 Present. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
So this morning, we start with public portion. We ask you to please kindly keep your comments to three minutes. As you can see, there's a lot of folks that want to speak today. And then we have six topics on our agenda. First, we'll start with bids with Jeanne Caroza. Then we have the proposed changes to the agricultural site plan applications, and that's being brought to us by the Ag Committee and Tina Laguerre in our Planning Department. Then we have the 152 Three Mile Harbor Affordable Housing Overlay Petition for Change of Zone. That discussion will be led by Tina Laguerre and Eric Schantz. Then Tom House will be making a presentation on Hampton Pride Proposal for Wayne Scott Green, the Rick Dalmastro Memorial Park. We will have an after-hearing discussion on Chapter 255, Modify Requirements for ADUs, with our Deputy Town Attorney Brittany Toladano, followed by a presentation, an update on the Ditch Plains Dune Reconstruction with David Leece and Brian Frank. That'll be followed by liaison reports and then resolutions. So I have a list here of folks that have signed up. What I had said earlier before we went on camera is if you didn't get a chance to sign up and you want to speak, I will be asking for a show of hands, and you know, you're welcome to come to the podium. So first up is Vicky Litman. Welcome, Vicky.
My name is Vicky Litman.
Could you just make sure you're talking into the microphone so folks at home can hear you?
I need a little step stool.
Thank you.
And I'm here today to discuss a situation concerning one of our community seniors who resided at St. Michael's Senior Affordable Housing. I was contacted by a senior living here who informed me that they were being evicted. As we spoke, she was sitting in the parking lot with someone from the Department of Social Services while the sheriff's office packed up her belongings. She was the only, she was only allowed to take one suitcase of clothes. This 80-year-old woman, who had suffered a stroke and had her arm amputated, she has no family to provide support. She mentioned that she'd be going to emergency housing, and she had assisted living scheduled in 10 days in Ronkonkoma, but St. Michael's housing couldn't wait. The sheriff's office informed her that she could not go through her belongings until they were placed on the sidewalk on Montauk Highway in Amagansett. As she waited, she was then informed by DSS that they could not wait any longer for her belongings to be placed on the sidewalk, and she had to leave everything she owned behind. The following day, the town arrived with a pay loader and discarded all of her belongings into a dump truck. She lost everything, including all of her life's pictures, belongings, filled with cherished memories. How did this happen? Where was the social service coordinator at St. Michael's Housing? I've reviewed St. Michael's Housing website and found only a general statement regarding the role of the social service coordinator. Each complex has an SS coordinator on the staff who is there to help the resident navigate through their home and health needs and link the resident to the necessary services he or she may need. There was no phone number or name that I could even contact. I didn't know who to call. It is despicable that anyone in senior housing would allow this to happen. I'm not here to dispute the reason for her eviction. Unfortunately, this is not the first time a senior living in affordable housing has reached out to me for assistance. When I inquired about this situation, I was informed that there was another woman who was evicted, and her belongings were placed on the sidewalk, and she's now living in a car. Each affordable housing complex has its own board. However, there have been allegations of retaliation against residents when residents makes complaints to the board. So I'm here today requesting that this board establish an independent oversight committee for all housing in the town of East Hampton. The town provides grants to these affordable housing projects. Therefore, it is essential that this town board ensures that these housing facilities treat their residents fairly, humanely, and with respect. Imagine if it was your mother treated this way. Our seniors deserve our respect, and this town board needs to ensure that they'll stand behind them with unwavering support. And I have pictures that were taken, and this was very hard for me. It took me a little while to come because I was so emotional the day that she called. And I did reach out to Tom, and thank you, Tom, for sending me a list, but that was, I couldn't get any help. But this is all her stuff on the sidewalk. Everything she owned, pictures of her family, her kids, everything was gone. And this is the picture of the pay loader that dumped it the next day. Now, if she had only been given more support, maybe, you know, maybe she could have reached out to someone earlier to help her move her stuff, but she didn't. She wasn't unable. She had a stroke. She mentally wasn't able to deal with the situation. So I would appreciate if you could do this committee. All of you know my phone number, and I do know a couple of people that would be willing to reside on it. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Katie Casey. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisor and Town Council. Katie Casey, or Catherine Casey, from the East Hampton Housing Authority. I'm speaking on 152 and 33. I appreciate all the good work the Planning Department has put into reviewing this proposal and applaud the Town Board for seeking new and innovative ways to meet the housing needs of the community. I would welcome private development of reasonably priced housing that is built, operated, and maintained as affordable to residents of East Hampton. The Housing Authority does partner with for-profit developers who make a reasonable return on their investments. We could not deliver the projects we do without their partnership. The proposal being discussed today is not by definition affordable housing. It is for-profit development seeking favorable zoning and consideration under affordable housing rules. With regard to co-ops or condos, it would be very difficult to manage and ensure compliance. The Office of Housing and Community Development and the East Hampton Housing Authority do not manage private property. OHCD does inspect private homes with Section 8 tenants and administers ADUs, ADU permitting, but does not manage those properties. A condo or co-op scheme would mean multiple owners, many likely to be LLCs, further obfuscating who is the responsible party. There should be one owner, agent, or manager ultimately responsible for the entire property for effective management to ensure conformity with the special permit conditions. Seventy-nine units is too ambitious and runs contrary to the 60-unit cap for any given site, regardless of lot size. Maximum 60 units at one site or project is a reasonable yield. Two contiguous lots should be considered one site. Merging the two lots for development and septic purposes or keeping two separate lots should not change the 60 units per cap, per-site cap. To date, the Housing Authority has never applied for a variance but works within the limits of existing code and has never built more than 50 on any given site. The Housing Authority, Windmill, Whalebone, and St. Michael's deliver affordable housing to the community within the parameters of town code. I invite the private sector to do so also. Condos can be built, multifamily rentals, single-family homes, AHOs, and ADUs. These are all existing tools available to private for-profit developers to create reasonably priced homes for East Hampton residents. Employers can and do purchase or build on the open market to provide workforce housing. We should continue to work on new and mutually beneficial initiatives to meet the housing needs of residents while preserving quality of life and community integrity. In conclusion, the profit potential should be very, of this particular plan, should be very attractive to developers who likely do not want to carry the property or be landlords, but the co-op condo model is highly problematic concerning continued compliance, monitoring, and holding property operators accountable. Alternatively, developers should consider a master lease with subleases to employers with one central management. Employer buyers should expect to lose money annually, but they may decide that the equity in the property is worth it, particularly if they can expand their business with additional employees. It is conceivable that a family could purchase one of these units for private use. The project as proposed maximizes profit for the developer and may be a benefit to local businesses, but does not appear to be truly affordable housing, which stabilizes community, promotes affordable year-round residency, allows for occupational and economic mobility of renters, and includes a solid plan for responsible management and special permit compliance that does not burden the town with administrative functions beyond current scope. Seventy-nine units is excessive. The project should be held to existing code, which already enables both affordable multifamily rental housing with higher densities, eight or 12, and private sector development of condos or co-ops at market rate with lower density, which translates to lower return, but is permissible. As presented, this proposal at its core is an open-market commercial for-profit enterprise under the guise of affordable housing in an attempt to benefit from preferential town code, swift expediting, and waived fees. I urge the Town Board to remain vigilant to avoid setting any precedent that has the potential to carry with it irreparable unintended consequences and reject this particular plan as proposed.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Next up is Paul King III. Welcome, Paul.
Good morning. My name is Paul King, and I grew up in the neighborhood directly impacted by the proposed 79-unit development at Three Mile Harbor and West Drive. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning and development of the lots. While I agree that affordable housing is much needed, especially as a young person living here, watching all my friends leave each day as it continues to become more and more unrealistic to survive here, I do not believe that this kind of project is the answer. After reviewing the Town Planning Department's memo, I have serious concerns regarding zoning compliance, the neighborhood compatibility, environmental impacts, and the unprecedented ownership model proposed by the developer. Specifically, the project exceeds the 60-unit limit for the single site and appears to require variance. The employer-owned condominium model is not contemplated anywhere in the town code and requires new regulations and oversized structures that are not yet in place. The density and size of the development are out of character with the surrounding residential neighborhood. One parcel includes native woodland and likely habitat for the endangered northern long-eared bat. And growing up here, I could tell you that it's also home to many eastern box turtles, which are also in decline. Habitats like these, including the open field habitat on the property, are very important corridors for our native wildlife, and it seems we're losing them with every new project. The development would require clear cutting nearly of all of it. The traffic study submitted by the developer uses flawed methodologies and emits nearby projects, and the school impact study was authored by the developer rather than an independent professional. The traffic impact would be huge. The neighborhood already has too many vehicles cutting through and speeding down Morris Park, as we have seen by the town's recent addition of vehicle weight limits as well as stop signs. So given these unresolved issues, I respectfully request that the board reject the rezoning request and require any future proposal to fully comply with the existing town code, environmental protections, and proper planning standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Brian Niggles. Welcome, Brian.
Good morning, Supervisor Burke, members of the board and the community. My name is Brian Niggles, and I'm here on behalf of my family, Lisa and Charlie Niggles, who own the home at number 163 Mile Harbor Road immediately neighboring the 152 property that is being considered, as well as owners of Round Swamp Farm, the farmland that is also immediately neighboring this property that, for 10 generations, my family has farmed and lived on. I'm here to strongly oppose that this zoning change be considered. This is the wrong place for something like this, an industrial condominium complex, to be built, for many reasons. Most importantly, what was once three-acre zone land that had one house on it now would be considered for, that's one unit for every three acres, would be considered to have 12 units for every one acre. It's a massive project that is, would destroy the neighborhood and what little farm presence, open space presence there still is in the free town area of Three Mile Harbor Road. There are many flaws and contradictions within the studies that the applicant has provided, one of which being that the applicant states that the maximum impact to the school district will be 80 students and likely less, with the assumption that tenants will be single, single people without families, without children. However, why would it be necessary to have two- or three-bedroom units for a single person with no family? So I find that to be very suspicious and flawed reasoning behind their economic study. Furthermore, it concerns me that the town is hearing such a lengthy application that obviously much time and effort has been put into behind the scenes. The community has only just recently found out about it through neighborhood action over the weekend, over Thanksgiving weekend. The applicant's attorney has requested that the approval be issued by next week, December 9th. Otherwise, the project will not go forward. So here we are. And furthermore, traffic, 160 parking spaces are proposed. If you count how many cars are in the parking lot of Buzz Choo dealership right now, there are about 160 cars. So picture putting a dealership, a car dealership's worth of cars in the middle of a Three Mile Harbor Road neighborhood. The applicant states that it is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, that this is an industrial and commercial neighborhood. And I invite everybody who's here from West Drive and Morris Park to describe whether their neighborhood, if they would consider their homes and their yard, families' spaces as industrial and commercial. This is a residential neighborhood. It has three-acre and one-acre parcels. This is not a commercial area. This is the wrong site for this proposal. There are other places that should have affordable housing. I grew up here. I went to John Marshall Elementary School. I went to East Hampton High School with the attorney's children. I know many people who live here and who can't live here anymore, and I understand that affordable housing is important. We have suggested on our farm, to the credit of the town and what you'll be discussing in the future, that there are options for affordable housing to be built within structures that currently exist in barns and in other ways that would keep the rural character, the farmland that this board and this town and this community has spent generations to preserve, to throw that out the window at this time and in such speedy and without proper notice to the town. And yes, I understand hearings will be had and that this will be something that is ongoing, but a lot of work has been done behind the scenes on this. It's very concerning that so much is happening that they're requesting that this approval be done within a week. It's preposterous, and I hope the town doesn't waste a single moment more of your time or the taxpayer dollars of the citizens of this town and immediately and swiftly denies the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Albert Lester. Welcome, Albert.
I'm still, I'm from Round Swamp also. My family settled.
If you could just move the microphone closer to you. I just want to make sure the folks at home can hear you.
My family settled this town along with, you know, a bunch of other people, the first people to come here. And it's just disgusting to think that they would take something like this, an old state like this, tear down this beautiful home and put up, you know, a bunch of stuff. And I'd have to look at it because I live in the back lot there. And it's just disgusting that people would even think about doing this. You have down by the airport, you have plenty of room down there, and Wayne Scott, and there's plenty of room around to build, build. We already have two places built on Three Mile Harbor Road. We have Whalebone and the other new one they put up down, you know, the road from us, and that's enough. You got to stop it. It's going to, to me, it's an eyesore right in front of my house. And my house is 300 years old. And that house, I don't know how old that is, but it's old too, and that was in the family too, relation. Most of the people on Three Mile Harbor Road were related to us when I was a boy. And I just can't see destroying this place, and that's what's doing. We've got enough with, you know, the industrial that's over on the Springs roadside coming across. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Albert. JB DeSantos. Welcome, JP.
Thank you, madam supervisor, and good morning, members of the board. Been a resident of Free Town for the last 25 years and having worked on the comprehensive plan for the town of East Hampton and the upzoning, I strongly oppose this idea of rezoning and building 79 units, which will mostly, most likely put out on the road 200 cars with a minimum of 400 trips back and forth. And we already have Whalebone. We have the 30 units on 16 acres. How would you fit in 79 units on under six acres? Plus, the house that sits there at 152 is 175 years old. We should learn from the past. It's something we should preserve and not destroy. And we also have Project Most down the road, 98 Three Mile Harbor. We have the club with the idea of building 10,000, 12,000 square feet. It's too much. Soon you're not going to be able to get through, and we're going to become Southampton, and we do not want that. East Hampton is East Hampton. Picturesque, beautiful, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you very much, and I strongly oppose this change of zoning and the construction of those units. Thank you.
Thank you, JB. Diane Jordan. Welcome, Diane.
Good morning. My name is Diane Jordan. The proposed 79-unit development project, at a minimum yielding 382 new residents, is one of the largest density increases this area has ever seen and is being pushed forward on residential streets with no meaningful notice and without proper environmental review. This project presents serious density, traffic, safety, noise, and environmental risks, and it will permanently change the character of this neighborhood, which is in direct conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed plan includes a rezoning request for affordable housing development overlay designation. This rezoning application is a gross misrepresentation of the definition of affordable housing. Affordable housing is defined by income-based eligibility and regulated rents typically under federal or state programs to ensure compliance with affordability standards. The proposal is intended for business owners purchasing homes to rent to their employees without any government oversight, income verification, or rent regulation. This is not affordable housing. It is a private rental arrangement with no enforceable standards or long-term affordability guarantees. Additionally, the request to change town code and create a new administrative structure would require hiring permanent full-time town staff to enforce compliance. Those salaries will come from taxpayer dollars. Why should taxpayers subsidize oversight for a private business model? The answer is we should not approve the zoning or change in town code, as taxpayers and voters are not supportive. Taking a deeper look at the environmental risks of this proposed plan, increased housing density threatens groundwater quality and septic system capacity in this environmentally sensitive watershed area. Public health and wildlife habitats will be endangered townwide. More septic discharge introduces nitrogen and pathogens into East Hampton's sole source aquifer, which is the only drinking water source for this entire community. Increasing impervious surfaces such as parking lots, rooftops, and driveways will significantly amplify stormwater runoff, carrying pollutants and debris into surrounding waterways. These contaminants spread downstream, degrading water quality and ecosystems. As for traffic and safety, Three Mile Harbor Road, Morris Park Lane, and West Drive are not designed for high traffic volumes. A 79-unit complex will generate hundreds of daily car trips, truck deliveries, and more service vehicles on the roads with no sidewalks, limited shoulders, poor street lighting, and already limited visibility. Pedestrians, including children, cyclists, and joggers, share these roadways with motor vehicles. These higher traffic volumes will vastly increase pedestrian and motor vehicle accidents as well as wildlife collisions. Emergency access and response to emergencies are also at serious risk. Increased traffic volume will obstruct fire trucks, ambulances, and police vehicles, delaying critical response time, possibly fatally delayed. Despite being labeled workforce housing, these units signal seasonal dormitory housing for transient summer staff. This means higher turnover, late activity, excess parking, and traffic patterns entirely incompatible with these streets. We respectfully streets. We respectfully ask for an immediate pause on all approval and a commitment that the town maintains its low-density residential character and rejects this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Next is Jerry Butler. Welcome, Jerry.
My name is Jerry Butler. I am Chair of the CAC of East Hampton. And I have a letter here that was written to the board that I'd like to read to everybody here.
Sure.
Can everybody hear me, by the way?
Yes.
At the December 1st, 2025 Regular Meeting of the East Hampton Zagg Harbor CAC, 10 members of the community in our jurisdiction came to address our committee regarding the work session topic 152, Three Mile Harbor Road, and 33 West Drive. On the agenda for the December 2nd, 2025 Town Board Work Session, all 10 in attendance were unanimous in opposing the code change to allow 79 units of condominium-style workforce housing on these two parcels. None of those present indicated that they would be able to attend the work session because they all have work to do during the day, but some indicated that they would try to call in for public comment. The committee offered to write this letter on their behalf, which was unanimously approved by the committee. The community members believe the proposal being considered today is too intensive and will adversely impact their neighborhood. They oppose a code change to allow large-scale development to be sold as individual units to be rented out by owners. They also oppose opening West Drive, which would overburden Morris Park Lane and already inadequate roadway for the existing traffic. Furthermore, they had reviewed and found flaws in the traffic study, submitted and expressed doubt that this particular housing proposal would have any meaningful community benefit. We respectfully submitted, Jerry Butler.
Thank you, Jerry. Next up is Rona Klopman. Welcome, Rona.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. It's Rona Klopman from Amagansett. I'm not here to talk about what everybody else is here to talk about, so you might be a little relieved. I'm here to discuss the presentation, first on the agenda, which will be presented by Tina Legren, the Director of the Town Planning Department regarding the Agricultural Advisory Board and the proposed changes to the site plan review process. I've taken time to thoroughly review the documents related to the agenda item, and I have to admit, I'm totally unclear about the recommendations that will be presented today by the planning department. When I went into the history of agriculture in East Hampton, I came across a very noteworthy editorial in the East Hampton Star dating back to January 2011 titled "Quoting Trouble on Farmland." And the central theme of that piece was strong support for continued reviews by Planning and Zoning Board in public sessions, as that time there was a desire to have no site plan review by farmers. The sentiment of having a review, and that was 14 years ago, so it's been ongoing for a long time, the review of each and every property remains relevant and worth considering as we discuss the future of agricultural lands. According to historical records, there are approximately 366 acres of farming property throughout the town. Before any decisions are made regarding changes to site plan review process, I think there should be a comprehensive document detailing these properties, including the names of the owners, the addresses, the restrictions, easements, and development rights associated with each of the farms. For instance, we know that Peter Dankowski received $4 million for development rights on his property. So what specific restrictions accompany that transaction? Similarly, Pat Struck received $2 million in development rights for the farmer's market, which has since evolved into amber waves. So we have to ask ourselves, what other properties exist with easements and restrictions that the taxpayers should be aware of? And also, there's been this recent controversy on further land, further lane farmland owned by the Little Family and sold recently. And there's kind of a lack of an awareness by anybody as to the situation, considering, you know, it's been in the paper recently. The highlights show the critical importance of having a thorough understanding of the agricultural lands and easements and restrictions. The absence of a site plan review can significantly impact neighborhoods and properties adjacent to these agricultural sites. How can we allow unknown information regarding agricultural lands to proceed without proper review, especially if we don't have any listing of the development rights, restrictions, and easements for each of these properties? So we would like, I'd like the Town Board to consider the implication of the proposed changes carefully. It's essential we maintain transparency and ensure all stakeholders are informed about agriculture landscape in East Hampton. Only then can we make decisions in the best interests of the community and preserve the integrity of the farming heritage. So I thank you.
Thank you, Rona. Next up is Jane Mearing. Welcome, Jane.
Good morning. I hope everyone had a lovely holiday, Thanksgiving. I'm Jane Mearing. I live in Amagansett. I'm here speaking only as an individual resident, not as a member of any appointed board. I wanted to speak on ADUs today. I did speak, as you'll recall, at the public hearing on the record last week, but I wanted to just take a little extra time to reiterate or just expand on some of the things I said because I was going fast, as usual. So first, I just wanted to say, you know, at the public hearing, I advocated that, and I know the record's closed now, right, advocated that both detached and attached ADUs can be permitted on 15,000-square-foot lots compared to the current 20,000 minimum. As part of that, I wanted to make clear that the part of the, that this part of the code should be written to make clear that ADUs and existing improvements on a lot together should meet all, must meet all dimensional zoning requirements, including GFA coverages, setbacks, and clearing. Because I don't think that was made super clear in this draft. Second, I addressed the language that appears repeatedly across the proposed code. Quote, "The accessory dwelling unit is rented or occupied by either a person who, A, a person who qualifies as a resident, or B, a member of the owner's family." Of course, creating affordable living options for family members, perhaps younger or senior family members who can't find accessible, stable, year-round housing is a key goal of ADUs. However, the broader goal is for ADUs to add to the affordable housing stock that can accommodate people who live and work locally here year-round. So I suggest the language perhaps simply changes to, quote, "an unrelated person or a member of an owner's family who qualifies as a resident." If you move forward leaving the language the way it's written, this code will leave a very large loophole, especially when you open it up to ADUs being created on properties that are seasonally owned as opposed to primary residences. I mean, you can sort of think about some of these unintended consequences. You have not even a second homeowner letting their, maybe their family, their young person live there, but they're not working in the town. They're not creating anything. So it's not really an ADU anymore. It becomes a guest house or sort of a high-end crash pad. And I think that's very counter to this board's good intent for expanding ADU inventory onto non, you know, not simply primary residence properties. I reiterate, I agree with the concept of expanding the reach of ADU creation on such lots, but the code as written in the draft does not yet address numerous likely unintended problematic consequences and opens it up to potential abuse, which helps no one. So, and again, this was also brought up by another person, that's my last sentence, that, you know, second homes are not just second homes. There are speculative development that wind up in the, you know, very short-term rental circus. And I don't think this code really has anticipated it. I know, I hear the term, you know, we don't want analysis by, you know, paralysis analysis. I think that's not the way of looking at it. You know, it's good governance and it's the right way to craft code to really work on unintended consequences. It doesn't have to be perfect, but I think this part of it has to be closer. So thank you for letting me come back on that.
Thank you, Jane.
Christopher Kelly, Timmy Latham, Shay Kelly, Dubin Cordararo for the applicant on 152. I want to thank the board for taking the time to consider this application. We've been working with town officials now for over three years, working to try to develop a pathway to encourage the, or incentivize the private sector to build affordable housing. And there's advantage to that strategy, several advantages. One, it requires no public money. There's no strings attached to that money. And the private sector has the ability to move much quicker in terms of constructing a project. Now, the workforce model we have developed, which has been applied to the 350 Pantago project, which is now before the Planning Board, and we hope to apply to this project, allows employers to buy condo units and rent to their income-qualified employees. Affordability is protected because there is an affordable housing easement on the property. There are restrictions in the offering plan that is filed with the AG's office. And there are income qualifications and review of leases. So there's multiple belt and suspender techniques for assuring affordability. Now, I thought it was interesting with the Housing Authority Director up, and I just share a story. I know you guys are bored with my stories, but back in the, I believe it was the 80s, when I was the Housing Authority's counsel, we proposed converting a motel next to the Montauk train station to affordable apartments. They are now Avalon Apartments, and they've been there for many years, owned by the authority. But the Housing Office Director at that time stood up and opposed it. And Tom Rule said, "Well, we've done a survey of people who don't have housing in the town, and they'd much rather own than rent. So we're opposing this project." So you can see that sometimes there's territorial claims by certain people in government, and there's certain arguments that in the view of time don't make a lot of sense. Now, the memo produced by the Planning Department describes how this project satisfies the requirements of the code. And I think several speakers maybe need to familiarize themselves with the fact that there will be a package sewage treatment plant on here, that the traffic study is, has been submitted, there's been an economic analysis. And a lot of the documents that are actually required more for the Planning Board's consideration than for rezoning, but take it to face value that we've submitted them here and the town will consider it as part of the rezoning. The only issue we have with the memo from the Planning Department, they did an excellent and comprehensive job, is with, as to whether a variance is required for the 79 units as opposed to 60. That's ultimately going to be a determination of the building inspector. It doesn't need to be made at this juncture because we'll have to abide by whatever the building inspector ultimately says. But there are other ways to deal with that, and that is to allow, to have an amendment whereby the Planning Board would be allowed to modify density in situations where there was over 200% of the minimum lot size for affordable housing development, which we have in this case. But there are ways to deal with that, and we'll, you know, live with whatever the town ultimately decides. So thank you for considering this, and we, and we hope you look favorably on the application.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is Hersi Eggerton. Welcome, Hersi.
Good morning, Kathy and Town Board. I'm Hersi Eggerton, a resident of Wayne Scott since 1978. Indulge me in a change of topic, but I'm here to express my concerns about the pink tetrahedron of mirror balls that's a part of the Hampton's Pride Commemorative Proposal for Wayne Scott Green Rick Del Mastro Memorial Park. First, let me express my admiration and respect for the work of Tom House, a Hampton's Pride founder and the presenter this morning of the Commemorative Plan, and Gustavo Bonvardi, the designer of the proposed plan. I am also a significant supporter of Hampton's Pride and its activities and have been a participant for several years in the Hampton's Pride Parade. However, I am concerned about the aesthetics and the scale of that part of the referenced historical marker, which looks to me more like an oversized display of pink Civil War cannonballs than the New York City Gay Activist Alliance symbol of civil rights, pride, and celebration. That symbol is an inverted pink triangle, not the stack of mirrored balls designed by Mr. Bonvardi for this park. I think that the Commemorative Plan works most effectively with the in-ground markers already in place at the four corners of the original Swamp Nightclub, the recreated triangular dance floor, and the stone bench with the curving side facing the dance floor with the continuous mosaic mural, and finally, the stone path circling the dance floor. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Hersi. So that's everyone that has signed up this morning. Kirby? And then you could go next. Yeah. Good morning, Kirby.
It's still good morning. So good morning to the Town Board. I'm Kirby Marcantonio. I've lived here since 1960. When I came here, when I was eight years old, went to St. Philomena's Catholic School, which is now Most Holy Trinity. Apparently, there was no St. Philomena. Graduated from East Hampton High School when it was the middle school now, dislocated my shoulder at Herrick Field playing football. And I've watched over the years as the town that I loved has slowly become impossible to live in because of the high cost of housing. I want to thank the board for this time and also thank all the people who came to express their thoughts. This is one of the most important projects proposed in this town. And as you'll hear from Eric's presentation, it checks all the boxes for an affordable housing overlay: three acres or more, public water, access to two means of access in Egress, a configuration that allows for the coded 12-unit density, and a state-of-the-art septic system that will be the envy of the neighborhood. But we all know why we're here. Businesses can't hire because they can't house anyone. From the town itself to Southampton Hospital, local restaurants, shops, construction, service business are all in the same boat. And we need a bigger boat, my friend. I've spent four years working on this project. The first result is 350 Pantago, where we will build 47 units. Problem is, we already have 70 local businesses that want units. Many more want more than one. So how are we going to choose who gets units, who survives, and who doesn't? 152 Three Mile Harbor is the answer. And we are damn lucky to have found it. In a town that is 97% preserved or developed, finding a piece that merits an AHO is nearly impossible. There are none in Montauk. There are none in Amagansett. There are a handful in East Hampton. And then we have the big three in Wayne Scott: the gun club, the airport, and the sandpit. None of which I expect to see any housing built there. Well, not in the next 10 years, let's say. So let me just get to the specifics of what's been raised here. And I thank the people for bringing these concerns. First of all, there was a question about secrecy, for lack of a better term, a cabal of people between the town and us who are interrelated in some way and skirting the normal procedure. Well, first of all, we've been working for four years on workforce, so the workforce concept should not be anything new to anyone who follows what we've been doing. Second of all, this property was put on the market in January of this year. I know from the agent that they went to every stakeholder in Three Mile Harbor, and they offered it to them. Nobody bought it. Nobody wanted it. It was brought to us because they understood that we might have a utility for it. So the first thing I always do is I go to the town to ask their opinion. In that case, it was Eric, Eric Shantz, when Eric was still the Office of Housing. Eric sat down- Eric sat down and, to my surprise, drafted a memo which said that, because this site is two distinct pieces of property, with two distinct accesses and accesses, over three acres in size, with the proper configuration and public water, it should be treated as two sites. That didn't come from us, that came from Eric. So, then we had to prove that we could actually take these two parcels, which collectively come to 79 units, again, as per Eric's memo, and our engineer came up with a way that we could actually use the property within the code to do exactly what should be done. Then, we went to the Suffolk County Health Department to vet the idea that, rather than having two septic systems, it would be far more beneficial to have one septic system. They concurred. We therefore were, over the course of six months, able to come to a site plan, which we have now had waiting to be seen by the town. So, as far as anything done behind closed doors, if people want to pay attention to the planning process, they could have read the tea leaves, and more importantly, if they wanted to buy the property, I guess they might have. Now, how about workforce itself as a concept as affordable housing? Affordable housing is very simple to understand. Somebody's got to own it, and somebody's going to live in it. Most of the projects here are owned by the town of East Hampton. They own it, they rent it to people who qualify. That's affordable housing. We have leveraged the private sector to take the financial burden off the town so that they themselves are the stakeholders. So, whether it's Southampton Hospital, or the town, we would hope, or Luigi's, these people understand that having housing is the key to continuing to operate their businesses, public, private, whatever it may be. They cannot right now buy anything affordable to house employees in because, as we all know, the cheapest house in East Hampton, a million two, million three, million four, and you only get to put four people in it. Now, we also know there's plenty of dark housing, where people are using single-family houses, which does not respect those limitations because they can't do anything else, which means the people who live in those are living in either unsafe conditions, illegal conditions, or, quite frankly, conditions that make them want to say, "Hey, I don't want to be here. Let's leave." So, as far as workforce being an affordable housing concept, the town itself, with the condominium itself, will oversee the leases that exist between the tenants.
Say that again, say that again. Town will oversee, did you just say? If you could just repeat what you just said, I, I, could you repeat what you just said, please?
Yes, I did. That, again, these, these projects are structured so that a lease exists between the employees and the owners of the unit. That lease, with which you have a copy, I believe, specifically sets the amount of rent that can be paid by those tenants, which fit within the affordable housing guidelines. There are penalties for violating any stature of it, which means that the people who live there have to work for the employers. They have to state that each calendar year with a lease shown to the town of East Hampton, and to us, and to the condominium owners. There is no subletting, there is no Airbnb, there is no third-party use of these properties. If, for some reason, anyone were to violate these provisions, there's a very simple remedy: forfeiture. They will lose their unit, and we have people behind them who want to buy them, so there's no problem about that. The second thing is affordability should be something that is perpetual, not temporary. In prior, in incantations such as Whalebone, the original Whalebone, that wasn't thought of, because who knew that an $85,000 house in 1982 was going to be worth a million for today? I have a friend who has one. He's going to retire in Florida and take the money with him. God bless him. So, here's the point. These units are not just more affordable than anything on the open market, they are also regulated to be an increase in the sales price of three, CPI per year. So, if CPI this year is 3%, and you own one of these units, your unit now is worth 3% more than when you bought it. If you sell it 10 years down the road, and we continue on this type of CPI, it'll be worth 30% more than when you buy it. Of course, the average house in Springs is going up at 8% per year, so in 10 years, it's going to be worth about 2.1. Now, how about the effect on the neighborhood? First of all, we are going to make improvements to this neighborhood that is going to make the life of residents in that neighborhood better. Currently, West Drive is what we call an old-town road, old-file-map road, basically a somewhat improved dirt road that runs from the edge of our property down to Springs. Now, on paper, though, it exists from there north, an extra 150 feet, to link up with Tar Bark Road, a fully-functional town-spec road with public water on it. We are going to, at our own expense, improve the road to that point, pave it, bring it up to town specs, bring down public water, and now the people who live on that side of the development will be able to take that road, not Three Mile Harbor Road, and go down to Springs Fireplace Road. Now, compare that to Gardner's Green, which is just up the road from us, where you have 50-plus units that has one access, Three Mile Harbor. It's been there for two years now. I haven't heard anybody particularly complaining about traffic there, and our traffic study demonstrates by making that improvement, we will not just allow our residents to have better access onto the road system, the people on West Drive will have a better access onto the road system. We also, because we are bringing public water to our site, we will need to share that public water with people who live on West Drive. If they currently are working on private wells, they will have the option of hooking up to public water at our expense. So, the last thing, of course, is septic. Now, septic, of course, is something that is crucial to any of these projects. You cannot build 12 units to the acre without a state-of-the-art package system, the same package system that exists at Gardner's Green, the same package system that, at, in Amagansett, at Gansett Green. This is the supersized, state-of-the-art, $2.5 million septic system. It makes everybody else's residential septic system look like a Model T. You would die to have one of these systems in your backyard because, guess what? Nothing comes out of it. You get a little bit of water, you stick it in a leaching field, that's it. That's why every county and every town on Long Island, except for East Hampton recently, approved these systems at these densities because they were far superior to anything that could be installed. So, as far as the environmental aspect of this project on this neighborhood, we're going to improve access, we're going to bring public water, and we're going to have a septic system that they all wish they might have a part of. Now, affordable housing versus workforce housing. We would love to build affordable housing, but here's an easy way of looking at it. Affordable housing, to build these units that we build or the town builds, is about a $700,000 proposition. Currently, the town only allows you to buy a house at $500,000. That's a cap that is set in the code and so far has never been changed. I think it should be changed. However, if you're going to build affordable housing where you can sell it to an average person here, and by the way, even an average person to buy a $500,000 house needs to be earning about $150,000 a year, still, you can't close the gap between the 500 you could sell it to and the 700 it costs you to buy unless you, A, get a subsidy. Who's the subsidy going to come from? The taxpayer? I don't know. Are you going to get it from the state of New York? If you do, you're going to have to let everybody in the state of New York buy those units as they can apply for a rental unit at a Gansett Green. So, unless you're going to do something fiscally...
Please. I understand that this is public portion, and I want to be equal to anyone.
I think, my, my closing point is very simple. We are a town with very few resources when it comes to housing. We all know that. There are almost no places to build what we need to build. We're willing to go out and put $30 million on the line to make this work. We're doing it in full display of anybody who wants to know. I'll be happy to meet with anybody who has an interest in knowing more, and the point of the matter is that this is the code of the town of East Hampton. This meets all the regulations that are necessary, as Eric is going to present, and the fact that, off the top of their head, some people in that neighborhood have decided that they simply don't like the idea only means that they need to be educated more and see the benefits, not just for the neighborhood, but for the town of East Hampton itself, in which we all share a part, no matter what street or neighborhood you live in. If we can't house people, we can't function. We're taking our side of it on. We would love to help on the affordable housing side as well, but that is a bridge yet to be crossed. In the meantime, we have a project in front of us that's been germinating for over a year in a four-year process that we believe is going to be beneficial to this town, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kirby. And I gave Kirby latitude because he is the applicant. The woman back here, she had her hand up. First, you can go next. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Is this on? Hi. My name is Mary Wassersstein. I live at 97 Three Mile Harbor Road, and I have to say, I'm feeling a little emotional as I've listened to all of this. I've lived on Three Mile Harbor Road for the last 15 years, and we just heard about this recently. This would be devastating to our neighborhood, which is overly overburdened. In the last 15 years, I've watched the housing project go up, I've watched the sand mine behind my house clear 13 acres, and it goes on and on. Yes, there has been impact from increased housing on Three Mile Harbor Road. In the morning, when I'm taking my children to the middle school and the high school, sometimes it takes me upwards of 10 minutes to get outside my driveway. I respectfully decline, Kirby, your offer of an approved road. I also have town water already, so I'm good on that point. This is so unkeeping with our neighborhood, which is a working-class local families, and the fact that you would put in 69, sorry, 79 condos for parking for 200 people shocks me. I actually did look at that property with my mother to buy it, and the reason we didn't is that we were looking to buy, to put different houses for, for one of my sisters and myself, and we were told by the broker that was not an option. So, to find out now that additional family homes for local families wasn't an option, but 79 condos that could be potentially owned by 79 different owners is shocking, and on top of it, the increased burden, apparently now you guys will be managing the leases. I just don't even know how we got here. I mean, I suggest to everyone on this Town Board, go walk that parcel of land and see if any of this seems, it seems appropriate at all. So, I'm not as well-prepared, and I don't have all the information, but I can tell you from an impassioned plea for someone who's lived there for 15 years with their family and cares deeply about this community, please don't do this to Freetown.
Good morning. Do we have the mic in the right place?
We do.
My name is Jonathan Moore. I live at 134 Three Mile Harbor Road, just a few houses down from the proposed development. I'm also counsel for the Freetown Neighborhood Coalition, and I only learned last night, about 6 o'clock, returning home from my Thanksgiving vacation, of this project. So, we will be presenting comprehensive comments on the, on the proposal, but my initial reaction is, wow. We, we've been involved for 22 years on the simple issue of opening the two sides, two sides of West Drive, and I would, I know, I moved up here from Washington, and I did some lobbying work with Congress, and it's just incredible to me how bad ideas never die. So, what we have here, we will, we will, I think is a question of institutional memory. We have new people on the board, we have new people on the, on the planning board, but the fact that incredibly, the, just this issue, this is a small part of this whole project, of the reopening of West Drive has, has even been put on the table to me as unbelievable. The amount of traffic that would, if you open West Drive, the whole Snyder Development, which has six two-story buildings, two one-story buildings, 110 parking places, places for two, two semis, they're going to be coming down Morris Park Lane. I live on that corner. Oh, my goodness, what a mess every day, and it, that's just incomprehensible. I mean, I suppose the, there are other aspects of this we will address, but I only learned of this last night. I'm not prepared. The Freetown Neighborhood Coalition will be presenting comprehensive comments on the proposal, and I just wanted to let you know, we are here and we are listening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Welcome, Charlie.
Charlie Niggles. I live at 163 Three Mile Harbor Road, right next to where this is proposed. I am one of the guys that said that he didn't, didn't want us to buy that property. Okay, the reason why we weren't, couldn't afford that property was, was only allowed to add one more house onto that property. It was three acres, it was one acre when I bought my house. Now, it's three acres. Zoned, it's agriculturally zoned. He paid agricultural taxes on his property. For the life of me, I can't understand why the town is even entertaining this opportunity, this stuff, to take agriculturally zoned land and put 78 units on it. Now, I just went blank. He, when, okay, if you're going to allow him to do that, now, can we take and do the same zoning, the next 10 acres, he's got 10 acres, right next to it, we'll do the same thing. Carolyn's got 10 acres, can she do the same thing? Now, we have 200, three units of 80 houses on each one. You have all affordable housing that you need in this town, plus a gridlock of traffic. So, if you're going to do it for him, you're going to do it for us and for her. That's fair enough, right? The other, he says it's affordable housing. How can you buy property for $5.5 million, put $30 million into it, and expect to get, make, make it affordable? Affordable for who? Who can afford to live in, in something that's going to cost that much money? These guys are businessmen, they're not stupid. They're not going to do it and lose money at it. So, somewhere's in here, there's a whole lot of something that doesn't sound right, and this is not the place to do it. You say, "Yeah, he's going, his traffic's going out on the Springs Fireplace, he's going out on Three Mile Harbor." It comes to a fork at the end. It all ends up with a light at the firehouse, right there. That's, you're not changing anything, it just ends up down the road a little bit. You really, you want to change some zoning, make it so that we can put housing in our barns, put housing above our, our unit that we have, the 14,000-square-foot unit? We could put 20 apartments in the top of that. We, you wouldn't allow us to put a basement in it, we could have put apartments in that. You want to change zoning, do that. Six units in a barn, in one barn, six units in another barn. We could put up small houses. All the farms, a long time ago, everybody had, had small housing and kept their help in the housing, and that worked out fine. Our help, we have a lot of help, a lot of them live in Springs, a lot of them have lived in Flanders, they live up the road. It's not going to change, and if you, you're not going to house all the people that work here. That's why there's so many cars on the road coming this way in the morning. You just, it's not going to happen. I mean, I, we can't even, we can't buy stuff for our, our own family, our sons and stuff like that. That's progress that's never going to change. The price of property, the reason why everybody comes out here because it's a beautiful place to live, that's not going to change. So, property value is going to go up, but for him to say this is going to be affordable housing, if Luigi's buys a unit for that to put their help in, you're going to pay $100 a sandwich at Luigi's because he's got to pay for all of this. So, somebody's got to really look at this and really think if it's a good idea or not. And I know it's not a good idea right there. Not, granted, it's, yeah, it's my backyard, from here to that first car, that's what I'm looking at. It's my, it's 60 feet, from here to the trustees' offices is how, how far away this building is, all the back of it.
Thank you, Charlie. Kirby. Gentlemen in the back, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Steve Thorson. I moved here with my father...
If we could just stop talking to the audience so we can hear the speaker, please.
My name is Steve Thorson. I moved here when I was 15 years old. My, my father got a job out here, he was a town planner. He came out here because... He came out here because he loved this town. And he loved the heritage, and he wanted to keep it that way. And that's why he fought for years as a town planner, to keep it so we didn't have Burger King and McDonald's and everything else. So I'm speaking on behalf of my father and myself. I'm a Wellbone Project, right here, okay? I came in, I was ready to leave. I got, somebody gave me an opportunity to buy a piece of property for a less amount. I bought the property. I worked three jobs. My wife worked. And we bought the property on our own. We went and built a modular home, okay? And we're still here. I added on to that home. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm not selling it like a lot of people around me. I have six neighbors. I'm a cul-de-sac. You know, and a flag lot on a cul-de-sac. I got six neighbors. My neighbors have changed over and over again. Some are renting, some are doing this. One's Airbnb now. You know what? That's not me. This is going to be for my kids. But when I found out I could stay here, I joined the fire department. I was a member of the fire department. I got a job with the sheriff's department. I'm not leaving. But I was wondering if maybe we could start thinking about town not getting into the real estate end of it. And saying, you got the CPF, you're buying property here and there, you know, just for people so they can look out at the beautiful scenery. Well, if you took and bought 20 acres, split them in half, you got 40 half-acre lots. And if you could see to giving some of the people that are on your list, an opportunity to buy that at a lesser rate, and see who can afford to buy that property, and go get a modular, or get their friends together, the framers, the electricians, the plumbers, and start building their own homes. And they can develop their families. Because right now, your first responders are leaving right and left, okay? Pretty soon, we're going to have to pay for it. I can tell you that right now. Unless they had family that have, you know, had property and they're here, I mean, any, you know, we're all dealing with young people that are leaving right and left, okay? I'd like to see some of them stay. Because they're the community. That's what makes community. The young people raising their families here. And it is a lovely place, and I know everybody wants to be here. But you know what? We got to try and not be in the real estate end of it because we could run into too many problems. But if we could buy property and let these kids have an opportunity to make their own plan, I think that's the way to go. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Would anyone else like to address the board? Otherwise, I'm going to go to the phones. Welcome, Greg.
I want to come up and say, good morning, and say I strongly oppose the project.
If you could just say your name for the record.
Greg Condon. I see behind me the fabric of the community, so many people that voted for you. I think this is a terrible idea. I just learned about it this morning. I didn't think I was going to come up and speak, but I am speaking. So I think it's a bad idea, and for many different reasons. Once a private developer builds this and all those units go into LLC, my whole neighborhood is turned into LLCs. It's like the Wild West up in Clearwater. There is no follow-up with town ordinances. There is complete lacking control. And that's exactly what will happen there. Once things are in LLCs privately owned, there is no getting them back, or maintaining them, or taking care of them. I see first responders behind me, the fabric of your community, we voted for you, this is a bad idea, and I oppose it. I just learned about it an hour ago. As I said, I wanted to come up and say that. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Greg. Danielle.
Thank you. I'm not good at public speaking. I'll do my best. I live currently at 93 Three Mile Harbor Road.
I didn't catch your name, Danielle.
I'm sorry, Danielle Quackenbush.
Thanks, Danielle.
I live at 93 Three Mile Harbor Road with my family. I own 176 Three Mile Harbor Road. My family goes back generations in founding this town, as well as my husband's. And I also own a local septic company. We have 15-plus employees, that some of them we house at another property. And I think this is a horrible idea. I oppose it tremendously. I would love to look into your treatment plant you're looking to establish there, because I have to say, you said waste doesn't have to go anywhere? I have contracts to remove waste from treatment plants in Sag Harbor. So it does have to go somewhere. There's sludge that's developed that has to be carted out, often by tractor trailers, 18-wheelers. And that's going to bring in contracts from out of town to remove that waste. And I can tell you that when you're pumping that waste, do you think it smells good? It does not. It has to be removed, and I don't think it's a good idea. You know, we have to fight to park our vehicles on property that we own, years and years in planning, just to be able to park our trucks so that we can operate in this community. And, you know, we're going to come in here and develop something with whatever that number was, 79 units. And again, I found out about this, which is why I'm not prepared, on Friday. So it's like, I just think this town is supporting money, rather than our history and our residents that live here and are trying to survive here. And I think you really need to take this into consideration to protect this community. And if this goes through, you're not doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Anyone else before I go to the phones? I'll come back to the room. All right, Jason, are there folks on the line that want to speak?
Yes, there are. I shall unmute the first caller. And...
Can you give me an idea of how many are on the line?
We currently have four callers on the line. And caller ending 0108, you're on the air. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You're on the air.
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Martin Drew from Springs. I'm speaking to express my very strong opposition to this proposed affordable housing overlay petition on this land. And I know the speakers have brought up very good points, so I'll bring up mine. The lot has already undergone comprehensive planning efforts, and I believe it's essential to respect those decisions made decades ago. AHO districts were removed from areas in Springs specifically to address this topic, and it was considered not compatible with the surrounding areas in previous comprehensive planning efforts. The proposed development would likely strain our local infrastructure, increase traffic congestion, and alter the character of the neighborhood as a non-conforming situation. And to speak to non-conforming situations, take a ride down to Maidstone Park in the summertime, and you'll experience all the ingress and egress issues that we're experiencing just by a facility not having the parking. So to bring 200 cars to the neighborhood, well, I could at least give the developer credit. He intends to at least park his cars on his own property. But that being said, it's crucial now to prioritize the preserving and protecting of our areas of natural beauty and the residential charm and the character and the history of our town. So as the Niggles family brought up, if these folks are all enjoying tax benefits as agricultural land, I would have to agree with those folks that, you know, if you're going to speak to something like this, then I would expect the farmers to cash out as well and hope that they get their 80-unit apartments, 100-unit apartments on their 10-acre site. So I would say, none of it makes any sense. And I know the Niggles family isn't about greed and housing. They're more about these farmers that they are, the historical families of our community. And our community has a rich history, and I respect it. We have a responsibility to protect it for future generations. So there are better areas suited for this AHO development. And like people mentioned, the airport location would be one of them. You guys have 600 acres up there to make all the noise and all the congestion you make as a community hub. But it seems that nobody goes to these thoughts. So the property needs to be... Here's my one question. Did the Realtor broker offer it as a willing seller to the town of East Hampton? Because I'm thinking the town of East Hampton, when they have a willing seller in front of them, they're anxious to preserve farmland. So what happened here? So that would be my question. So if these people are willing sellers at one point, how come the town didn't purchase it through the CPF fund, would be my concern. And here are my other concerns about that. The Community Preservation Fund also has a component within it that's supposed to be the key component of the transfer of development rights. So our town doesn't have the central bank, nor does it have the sending and receiving areas established in such a program. So for people and folks like yourselves who are concerned about what's going on, it's crucial to get our politicians to get to work on the sending and receiving aspects of the Community Preservation Fund that speaks to the transfer of development rights. Last I knew, we don't have one. So it's time for the town board to establish that program and identify the sending and receiving areas so we can save land that's worthy of preservation, and we can develop land that can handle it. That way, we'll allow the investors in our communities to focus in the right areas for the planning that's already done previous decades ago with several comprehensive plan activities with several different runners of that program. And Christ, it's been 30 years that I can remember asking to be involved in small ways with recreation. So no is the answer for me. No should be your answer as the town board. And it's far time you listen to your constituents, instead of ignoring them like we have been ignored in Maidstone Park with the destruction of our neighborhood, the loss of character to our area, and the safety questions that are now obvious and real because the town officials are not doing their jobs correctly. So if this has just come to light in the last several days for people that live in the area, well, it sounds like secret negotiations have been ongoing for the last three and a half years. So time to bring transparency to the forefront, fix the transfer of development rights program, and get your map together so that people in our community would know where the sending, that's to save the area parts of our town, versus the receiving areas, which would identify the airport as one of those areas. So good luck with this, and I support the homeowners in the area who say no to this horrendously
Thank you, Martin.
...poor, poor program. Thank you.
Jason, if you could please put the next caller through.
Absolutely. Hello caller ending 3739, you're on the air. Can you hear me? Check 12, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hey, do me a favor. Could you turn off the TV in the background? I can just hear myself echoing back at me and, you know.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. And you are on the air.
Thank you. Hi there, my name is Michael Forrest. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. I was calling on a different topic, but with regards to this affordable housing on Three Mile Harbor, it sounds like a bad idea. I'm against it, so I'll just comment there. Moving on, I know you had the ADU topic further in the meeting. I'm not available later, so I'm going to comment now. I'm all for making it easier for more ADUs to be available in this town, and I support the legislation that is being presented. Amy and I took the time to invest in our home with an ADU this year, to help with this affordable housing crisis. We really wanted to support the legislation, specifically allowing for the primary owner to be allowed to have an ADU and also rent the main part of their house for a summer rental. I did not understand that part when I did the ADU. I would have done it anyway. But it just feels like, you know, forever, locals have used summer rentals to help pay for college and other things to be able to afford to live here. And I don't know why we would be penalized for helping the town with their crisis, you know, spending the money, going through the time to allow somebody to have an affordable place to live and not have the right to be able to rent, you know, the other portion of, the main portion of the house for a summer rental. On a third topic, since I'm on the call, I'd just like to bring up that I hope you're still doing everything that you can to help the building department with their crisis. You know, seven months for building permits is really not sustainable for this town. You know, it's way too long. There's no way to keep everybody employed waiting seven months for a building permit. I know that you have a new team in place, and I'm supportive of them. Anything else that you guys can come up with to assist with getting out of this ditch that we're in, whether it be subcontracting with local land planners who know the code to help review? Anything to, you know, think out of the box to help that place get caught up would be appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Jason, if you could put the next caller through, please.
Absolutely. One moment. Hello caller ending 0299, you're on the air.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Town Board. This is Carolyn Logan-Gluck calling, and I'm speaking for myself this morning in regard to the proposal for the Hampton's Pride social area at Wayne Scott Green, Rick Dalmastro Memorial Park. I want to thank the Town Board for its continued interest in seeing this project to fruition. It certainly merits it. And I want to commend Tom House for the incredible dedication he has brought to this project. It is true that after Tom's presentation at the Wayne Scott CAC meeting two years ago, the committee unanimously recommended Tom move forward and share the design with the building department and Town Board. But there was quite some discussion before this vote was taken, and concerns were raised about certain aspects of the proposal, most notably the so-called monument, consisting of pink disco balls piled on a base. The proposal before you is largely unchanged since then, so these concerns remain. It should be noted, the original design for Wayne Scott Green that was generously donated by Edwina von Gough embraced a naturalistic aesthetic. The trees planted, since they're native, depict a modest structure of wood. While the pink mosaic planned for the inside of the dance floor bench is not inappropriate inasmuch as it would not immediately be visible to park visitors or passersby, the same cannot be said of the monument. I hope that should the Town Board vote to approve this proposal, allowances could be made to reimagine, modify, or even perhaps move the monument elsewhere. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jason, if you could put the next caller through, please.
Hello caller ending 8764, you're on the air.
Thank you very much. This is David Buddha calling in from the Springs. I was away this past week, just got back late yesterday, but I did have a chance to see the posted memo concerning this matter today that's on the work session agenda. First, I have to say, I am totally perplexed as to how this matter got so far and how this matter got put before you in a manner that presently has been discussed at such length after such a long period of time. I read the memo that Mr. Schantz prepared. I didn't have a chance to read every single document, but it's my recollection that there were two words that were missing from that memo, and those two words were "public hearing." No such zoning change can occur unless and until the Town Board holds a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. In fact, Madam Supervisor, it was very nice and courteous of you to allow Mr. Kirby to speak for 13 minutes, but this is public comment on a matter for a work session. This is not a public hearing. As I said the other day, when some of you do have a public hearing, you certainly should allow people to speak at greater lengths without restriction if they have something substantive to contribute to the matter. This is not a public hearing. There is no way that you should be dealing with this matter in such intensity. And the suggestion by one of the speakers that someone has put a deadline of a short period of time to act on this matter is preposterous, preposterous. It is so substantial, it is so extravagant, so enormous a project that would cause tremendous... tremendous disruption to an area that's zoned A3 and A and A. Uh, it would tremendously change the character of the, of the area. Also, let me echo something that one of the other speakers said, uh, I, I've lived here long enough to know that when the proposal to, um, to, to improve what was then known as West Drive North, and that became Tanbark Trail, when that proposal came forward to allow the Schneider's to develop their properties, there was absolutely measures taken by the town and promises and assurances made that West Drive would never ever be able to connect to that cul-de-sac at the juncture of Tanbark Drive, uh, as the enter of entry to the Schneider developed properties. So, I don't know what, what, uh, some of the, the applicant, as you called him, and his attorney are talking about, that simply should not be on the table. Next, the idea that you could possibly have two properties share a septic system and not be required to go through a subdivision process of merger is, again, preposterous. Um, there, there are many things that you have to do, deal with, and the one thing that you also have to deal with before you really have a session like you're scheduled for today is you have to refer the matter to the Planning Board, not a member of the Planning Department, but to the Planning Board to thoroughly review in public and to allow the public to speak at the Planning Board at the discretion of the Chair to discuss this proposed zoning change. This is not something between one attorney and one applicant and the Board. This is a matter that has to go through a tremendous process of vetting, review, and consideration. Now, I only have one second left, so I'll add one thought on another topic, and that is the ADU review. You had a hearing, a public hearing, I spoke. Um, just to respond to something Mr. Forst said, if you allow an owner of a property who builds an ADU, whether it be attached or detached, if you allow them to also rent and participate in the rental registry, that property is not limited to rental for the summer or for short periods of ta-, limited periods of time or a small portion of the year, that property can then be rented for three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, and that is a tremendously different concept than what Mr. Forst was trying to suggest that you'd be allowed to, that the owner would maintain a principal residence, but he would disappear for the summer and then rent it for the summer. That's not what you're allowing in the proposed legislation, and my time is way up, so thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you, David. Jason, is there anyone else on the line?
We have one more caller.
Okay.
Hello caller, ending three two four four, you're on the air.
Yes, hi, Martin Drew again, I figured I'd take the opportunity since I waited over an hour to speak.
No, no, sorry, Martin, you've already, you've already spoken. Jason, you can disconnect that.
Yeah, it's okay, you're on the other guy for thirteen minutes.
Thank you. Okay, a little levity. Would anyone else like to address the Board before we move on to topics? Okay, I don't see a show of hands. Uh, Jeannie Carosa, are you here to talk bids?
No, I think she's-
Did she leave?
Yeah, I think she did.
Okay, so then we're gonna move on to the proposed changes to agricultural site plan applications. So, Ian, did you wanna introduce us?
Here comes Jeannie.
Oh, I'm sorry, here comes Jeannie, let's do Jeannie.
Yes, I suppose. Just interested to do it.
Jeannie, you're up. Thank you for your-
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, I have a few bids, rejections, extensions. Um, the first bid is to accept the Cantonwell Court subdivision lot clearing. Ken Musell is the apparent low bidder in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred seventy dollars.
Just, Jeannie, excuse me.
Sure.
Kirby? We're, we're, if you wanna speak to someone, you can go outside the meeting room. Thank you. Sorry, Jeannie.
Okay, that's alright. Um, next is the Justice Court interior painting. Robel Painters is the apparent low bidder in the amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred sixty dollars. The next bid is the Maidstone Playground installation. Ken Musell is the apparent low bidder for that in the amount of ninety-four thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. Rejection of the sanitation scale improvements, um, that project came in way over budget. Um, next is the, the extension of the annual generator contract. Commander Power Systems agreed to extend, and the other extension is for the transportation and disposal of non-recyclable waste, used tires, and C and D debris. Winter Brothers Hauling of Long Island is the apparent low bidder, I mean, is, agreed to extend. And lastly, I have two notices, one for the replacement of the reels at the East Hampton Airport. Reels are the runway and identification lights, and then food service and kitchenware items. And that's it.
Great. Questions for Jeannie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the proposed changes to the agricultural site plan applications.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Kathy, and just to introduce this, um, I, I know this concept has been, been discussed for, for a long time by the Ag Committee. Um, and the, just to clarify what we're doing here today, there's a lot of talk about process and when the public becomes aware. I've mentioned this concept, you know, throughout the last couple of years, um, in my liaison reports, uh, you know, members of the public have attended Ag Committee meetings. Uh, there is no concrete proposal on the table today, um, there's no code changes proposed. Um, I wanted to bring this to a full public discussion so that everybody's fully aware of, of the idea, um, and if there's Board support and public support, we'll move forward on, on actual specific code changes. Obviously, the details are what's gonna be very, very important here, um, but as we heard in the, in the, the public portion, people are often worried about when things are, they're, they're made aware of, of ideas that are being talked about. I don't think this idea is a mystery, it's been discussed at, at several CACs. Um, and so anyway, it's a preliminary step, we welcome all public comments, uh, I wanna thank the Ag Committee for their work, and also the Planning Department, Tina Laguerre and Chris Stecker, um, I think their memo was fantastic, and this is a really good foundation for hopefully a productive conversation.
Thank you, Ian. So, Tina, are you, who's leading us off here? Is Amanda and Alex, are you? Welcome, Amanda and Alex. You guys wanna introduce yourselves?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, my name is Amanda Marrow, and I am the Secretary of the East Hampton Agricultural Advisory Committee, I'm also the co-founder and director at Amber Waves Farm in Amagansett.
I'm Alex Balsam, uh, Chair of the Ag Committee and co-owner of Balsam Farms with you.
Great. Okay, thanks for having us today, we're excited to be talking to you about this, um, about this process. You last heard from us this spring, we came before you for the first, our first annual State of Agriculture presentation, and we mentioned at that meeting that we'd be back to present some issues as related to agricultural site plan. Um, so we, um, 'cause there is no agricultural site plan actually, which is really what we're here to, we're here to talk about. So, um, our, our farms really can't operate productively without barns to store supplies and protect our investments in machinery, we need structures to clean and sort and package products, refrigeration to keep what we grow fresh, farm workers require clean facilities, farm animals need shelter, plants need greenhouses to get their start, and as we face continuing and intensified challenges associated with climate change, um, there's more protected growing that we anticipate needing in order to be viable. So, what we wanted to bring forth is our specific pinch points as they relate to, relate to site plan and agriculture, um, and some of our suggestions for how they might be remedied. We're, we're not lawyers, well, actually, Alex is, is lawyer. But the intention here, um, as, has been recommended to us by our, um, our current liaison Ian, um, and liaisons, um, that we've had before Ian, is to just come up with the pinch points, what would our suggestions be, bring those forth to the Town Board, um, and to Planning, and to the Building Department, and, and see what the appropriate code changes might be. So, that's really where we are in this, in this step. So, we spent, um, quite a long time developing this preliminary draft. Um, it has since been sent to, to Planning, um, they've made comments, we're gonna hear from Tina after this. So, Alex and I will spend ten minutes or less going through, uh, the high points of the proposal, and we're excited to go through the next, you know, the next process of, of how we might remedy some of these challenges within the, the agricultural industry. So, um, first and foremost, the, the challenge associated with, um, agricultural site plan is that there is no agricultural site plan. Um, our, any site plan approval process to construct anything currently has to go through either the residential or commercial process. This can be challenging for us because many of us farm on development rights land, you know, uh, land that has, that's fully, that's, um, that's encumbered with easements that restrict the construction of residential and commercial structures, only agricultural structures are permitted, but there's no pathway within the current site plan process to actually do an agricultural site plan. So, we get lumped in with either, either through the residential application or the, um, or the commercial application, neither of which is entirely appropriate for agriculture. So, first and foremost, what we'd like to do is just introduce a third category, um, which I think may be an administrative change, a third category to just kind of split down the middle between, between residential and commercial. Currently, we often, most of us pursue applications through the commercial channel, and many of the structures that we're constructing are so insignificant that actually the permitting process ends up being more expensive than the cost of the structure itself. We're talking about greenhouses that cost fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars to construct, um, and, you know, the, the square footage fee structure associated with commercial structures is obviously, you know, is greater than, than what that would be. Um, so, we, um, sorry, excuse me, let me just find my place. So, we've come up with a handful of suggestions of, of what we think is the best way forward. I'm gonna go through kind of the high level version of those, and Alex is gonna go a little bit deeper into different categories of, of structures. So, the first that I outlined is create an agricultural-
So, I, we maybe need to take this-
Let me know when you need to run the actual presentation here, are you going through the first couple pages? You're- Oh, no, we're just, we're just speaking.
Okay, okay. So, that can come down then, Chelsea, thank you.
Okay, so first and foremost, we're requesting there to be an agricultural category, so it's very clear to the Planning Department and the Planning Board, this is an agricultural project, neither residential nor commercial. So, that, that's first and foremost. Um, I'm gonna go through that kind of our six high line requests, and Alex is gonna get a little bit more specific. Um, we're looking for site plan exemption for ag structures of six hundred square feet or less, which currently exists within residential building code. So, if you're a homeowner and you wanna put up a shed that's three hundred square feet, you go to the Building Department, you get a building permit, and you're done. Uh, within agricultural, well, in, within where we currently stand, that site plan is, is triggered at two hundred square feet. So, what we'd like to do is just have the six hundred square foot threshold that already applies to residential structures be applied to agricultural structures as well. Um, we'd like to codify that season extending covers are not structures, so many of us rely on fabric row covers, netting, film, supported by trellising that's anywhere from knee to shoulder height, and we just wanna clarify that these structures, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even call them structures, they're just really growing aids that go on, that go up for a few days, weeks, months at a time and come down, are just, are not at all structures, but are just growing equipment that, that moves around the farm. Um, the specific, how it does relate to code, and what Alex is gonna talk more specifically about, is, is code changes as they relate to temporary agricultural structures and permanent agricultural structures. So, the definitions currently of, of the sorts of buildings, um, and beyond buildings, just growing aids that we use just aren't identified in, in Town Code, and so we'd like to clear that up by identifying the different sorts of tools that we use so that we can all be speaking in the same language and talking about the same thing, uh, when we are going through the approval process, and that will, that's what Alex will, um, will expand upon. Uh, next is an altered fee schedule as it, as it's associated with temporary, um, and lesser intensive farm structures. So, the, I mentioned earlier that, you know, the fee structure associated with putting up a plastic greenhouse that costs fifteen hundred dollars, the fee structure may, you know, may be that the, that approval process costs twenty-five hundred dollars, more than the cost of the, of the, the hoop house itself. So, um, again, that's, it's an area in which we are kind of, leave it to the experts to figure out a fairer way to go about the fee structure, but just to make it feel as though it's associated with the intensity of the, of the proposal. Um, and then finally, we're requesting, um, lot coverage of fifteen percent, up from ten percent, um, as it relates to temporary structures. So, increasing our ability to do, um, to put up temporary non-foundation growing cover that would extend our seasons. I think as we, you know, Alex has been farming here for longer than I have, but even in the eighteen years that I've been farming here, I think we're, we're experiencing weather extremes, um, well, in the season and, in the height of the season, but also in the spring and the fall as it relates to, um, frost dates, um, extreme weather, extreme rain events, um, and having protected growing cover is something that's going to be important as we go forward with making sure that we can continue to farm viably in, in the town. And, and we see our, um, neighbors in, you know, in other towns and in other areas of the country leaning heavily on these sorts of, are these sorts of season extension tools to be able to, to remain viable. So, I'll turn it over to Alex, who's gonna talk a little bit more specifically about the different sorts of structures we're talking about.
So, under our proposal, you know, again, we're establishing an ag site plan category, separate category, but within that category, you know, ag structures vary a lot from the, the very basic inexpensive but incredibly helpful structures that Amanda's talking about to, you know, riding academies and things like that, right? So, so, we've proposed to break this down into three categories, one being like, we're just calling a full-scale farm structure, this, these are structures that are open to the public, uh, would conduct commerce, um, you know, nursery sales, riding academies, things like that. Septic would likely be present, there's parking on-site. We, basically, what, here, for these, for these types of, um, of ag improvements, we're saying, just keep what we've got, right? We think the fee structure's appropriate, the review process is appropriate, um, and, and we don't have much to say about that. But, our next level, our mid-level, would sort of, we, it's called permanent structures, these are things with concrete or asphalt, you know, with, with a, with a real floor and a foundation, um, think of like a traditional barn for storage and things like that, um, might contain, contain septic, um, as, you know, for farm worker and produce handling safety and things like that. But generally, we'd say these, we, we feel these structures shouldn't require screening. The fee structure should, we feel should be altered. In our own experience going through our, you know, our own barn build quite a number of years ago now, but it was, the, the, the fee was quite burdensome, um, to us. I think of, uh, uh, again, these aren't high intense use structures, I think the fee structure should be, should be changed to make it a little more appropriate for, for what we're, what would be, uh, constructed there. Um, and then, the, the, the last category would be, um, would be the temporary farm structure. Now, the code has a good definition of temporary, of, of, of a temporary greenhouse in there, and that's basically what we're talking about, you know, uh, a non-contiguous foundation or no foundation at all, um, holly or plastic coverings, metal wooden poles, plastic poles, um, as support, these can be removed, uh, taken down, relocated fairly easily without, without professional help. Um, these, these structures are really important to where agriculture's heading, you know, what agriculture's become in our town and where it's headed. Again, they're not expensive to build, they're not, they're not, they don't take a lot of time to build, but the approval process sure is expensive as it currently stands and, and, and takes a lot of time. This might be an area where, you know, surveys, I'll say this, like, we've had quotes for whole field surveys ranging from seventy-five hundred to twenty-eight thousand dollars. Like, that's not sustainable for the, for the farmers out here. Maybe some, a more reasonable approach would be to either really use an existing survey if it has the relevant information on it, or to do partial surveys where you're just looking at the development area, because what you're looking at, you're looking at compliance with setbacks, compliance with coverage. After that, like, you don't, we would, we would, you know, say that we don't really need to spend those tens of thousands of dollars on those surveys to put up a twenty-five hundred dollar, you know, mostly temporary structure. These, these types of approvals shouldn't require any professional assistance, um, no formal plans, I mean, I think if we came up and, you know, to the Planning Board, again, we're not sidestepping the planning or the approval process, but anyway, we were just trying to make it more reasonable to what we're trying to, to construct here. You say, look, this is, this is the structure we're gonna buy, here's what it looks like, you know, again, no, no formal, um, or professional assistance. Um, and- And last thing I'd say about the, this is, the committee feels that this is probably something that, that we would say should be removed from ARB review, just because there's nothing, like, these don't come in different colors, there's nothing architecturally to review and approve here, you know? And, and I, I, I think that that's another step that, an expense that we could probably do away with for these types of structures. So that is where we landed. You know, as Ian said, this is sort of our, our presentation to the public of, of our pinch points and some of our proposed solutions, and we hope it starts a bigger community discussion and we can, we can get some changes in, particularly with this last category that we're talking about again. These are really important ag structures to growing vegetables and, and nursery and, and even animal husbandry, and we need a better path forward, because right now it is a, the approval process is a hindrance for these things. And as we're all trying to make agriculture successful out here, we're going to, we're going to need some of, some of this, some of this help. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do board members have questions for Amanda or Alex, or do you want to have Tina?
Tina.
Okay. Tina, do you want to present? And then we can go to discussion.
Thank you. Greetings, board members. Thanks, Amanda and Alex. That was a really good overview of what the ag committee's been talking about with the planning department. I'm here to talk about the context for why I think the recommendations for the ag committee do deserve more attention and next steps from the town. The planning department has been in several committee meetings with the ag committee, and at a high level, I think their proposed comment, their proposed recommendations make good sense and would help us better address agricultural land use within the town. I'm going to explain why that is, and I'll talk about the planning department's initial feedback on their proposals and what I think the next steps can be. A strong reason to support this effort is because it's consistent with the comprehensive plan of the town, right? Which is the guiding policy document for the town. I'm showing brief excerpts from here, both the visions and the goals of the comprehensive plan as it exists, specifically indicate the importance of preserving, preserving agriculture in the town. Even beyond this, though, we all know that farming is one of the industries that the town was founded on in the 1600s, right? And that, that heritage and history remains important to the character of the towns this day. Moving on, in our code, we already have protections for farming, they're just not really in the site plan section, right? The right to farm portion of the code was adopted in 1982. It acknowledges agriculture as a keystone industry in the town. The code also notes the importance of agriculture and contributing to the ambiance and what makes East Hampton's unique character, and as well as helping it be aesthetically attractive. The ag committee was created to help bridge the gap between farmers and the town board, further supporting the importance of that industry in the town. And then briefly, regionally and in the state, there are a lot of protections for agriculture. State law protects land in agricultural districts from some types of local regulations. Suffolk County works with the state to make sure that those districts are formed appropriately. The town has purchased a lot of land and done a lot to support the preservation of agriculture. We took a cursory look at other codes in the area, though, and they do more permissive towards farming practices than ours. Looking at ours, we regulate practices quite particularly through the site plan process. So I think that there is room to improve on this. So the next steps, with all that context, it's the planning department. I think there's a way to have greater alignment between those things, and at the same time make the code more user-friendly. I think it will be more appropriate for planning staff to have a clearer code to address these land uses, and will help the farmer make more informed decisions and be able to plan their work appropriately. Myself and Chris Decker have been through the proposal tail, and I'll provide my initial feedback at a very high level. The general theme of our comments is that while the recommendations are appropriate, they do need further discussion to work out the details, right? There, as Ian mentioned, there's no code developed. These are right now ideas, policy recommendations, and we need to have more attention on them to develop them enough to... So I'm going to go through the recommendations quickly just to give my high level.
Hey, can you give us one second, please? We have an issue with the, with the program. Thank you.
Issue with the network. Network break. Of course we do. It's not snow.
All right, we are ready to go. Sorry about that.
Great. All right, Tina, your backup.
Thank you. Thank you. So I was going to go through the six recommendations quickly. The first recommendation, to create an agricultural category within the site plan application. I strongly agree with this concept. I do think our regulating agricultural site improvements that are so closely linked to a farm's ability to operate is cumbersome. Our process is not adept enough to look at seasonal changes and configurations. If we established parameters for reviewing farm operations that balance their needs with the surrounding communities, I think that would be a really good place to be. We'd have to be careful that we make sure that we apply this type of review to only uses that qualify. So I think looking at the definition of agricultural uses in our code is going to be important, make sure that we target these changes to the folks who really need and will benefit from them. The second recommendation is requesting a site plan exemption for ag structures 600 square feet or less. As Amanda mentioned, there is already an exception for agricultural buildings that are 200 square feet or less in residential zones. Extending this to buildings that are larger would make sense, especially if it's not going to intensify the use to any great extent. So we would want to just make sure we understand that aspect, because we do want to be mindful of impacts to surrounding uses. And of course, we want to think about making sure setbacks are adhered to, as well as making sure that agricultural easement restrictions could still be adhered to and honored in any changes that are made to the sites. The third recommendation is to codify that temporary season extending covers are not structures. Regarding this, I think it'd be helpful in future discussions if the ag committee really defines what exactly they want to make sure is exempt. In our code, structures that are regulated by site plan review do include temporary structures. So having a very clear distinction between what is said here and what would still remain regulated, I think is very important. Defining a period of time that qualifies as temporary might also be something we want to think about. That has been a source of ambiguity in code interpretations of the past. Next is implementing code changes that allows for easier and faster approvals for temporary ag structures and permanent structures. I think that rational flexibility, I think we need to consider how to create the constraints. However, this recommendation, we want to make sure it's balanced, right? With the need to protect surrounding uses. And some of the recommendations of the committee, like the one regarding not having surveys part of the application, really go into like our application requirements and at our level of detail that needs careful consideration. Site plans always require surveys, so it'd be a very big departure from the way we currently review projects. I'm not saying that it's not possible, it just, it would be a very big change if, if we went down that route, in my mind. Recommendation five is an altered fee schedule. If we reduce the items that need site plan while maintaining controls through the building permit process that achieve safety and neighborhood protections, that'd be a great start for reducing the fees both that the town and the farmers have to, right? Save both of us town time and money. We already have an altered fee schedule for affordable housing projects, so there's precedent for relieving certain uses in the code. However, any application that does get submitted to us, our staff does devote a lot of time and energy to those efforts, and we have to review each application as carefully as the next. And I don't think our fees even capture all our costs, so I don't think that they're excessive. But I can see how they do add up, especially where large land areas are being altered or changed in any way. It's noteworthy also that we don't really see that, receive that many site plan applications for farmland currently. The last recommendation is the change in coverage from 15% to increase it to 15%. The current restriction for agricultural properties is 10% of coverage. This recommendation is linked to the need for increased flexibility, and the rationale does seem to support such a change. 10% is pretty restrictive with climate change requiring greater resiliency across so many levels of planning. It does make sense that we really strongly consider what resiliency farmers need, right? To address an uncertain future in that regard. To wrap this up, I'm, I'm not going to talk about the detailed process changes. I do think we need more time with that. I think it's going to be helpful for the committee to understand what support the town board has for these types of changes, and that we then, with that input, engage a wider group of stakeholders within the town. So the planning department's the only department that has really fully vetted the proposals thus far. The building department especially has a large role, the town attorney's office would really need to weigh in, in order to get a wider collaboration, see how, how to translate these into actionable changes in code. So once they're a little more fleshed out, there could be additional public comments and additional public discourse. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Questions, or I'll just?
Well, I guess I would just, I mean, if you don't mind if I start?
Sure, go ahead.
And I, I won't go onto, into every detail. Again, I think this is a preliminary conversation to see where, where it goes from here. But I do think it's important to note, as Tina did, you know, the town, we're an agricultural town, you know, our comprehensive plan, our code points to that, at least partially. You know, obviously, we're not fully agricultural anymore completely, we're a lot of different things, but that's an important part of our identity, our heritage, and I think that, you know, when you look around, that we all would agree that it's an important part of, of, of who we want to be. Our comp plan says it, our code says it. And, and as Tina said, we created the ag committee to hear directly from them about what they need to continue agriculture. You know, I, I know firsthand that agriculture is not the easiest way to make a living, and we live in a very difficult place to be able to afford as it is. You know, and farmers are certainly experiencing those challenges, just like many other people. So I think it's important that if we form that committee to hear from them, that we do, and that's why I think this preliminary conversation at a full public level is so important. I also think it's important to acknowledge right off the bat, as, as Tina and Chris did throughout the planning department memo, that we have to balance, you know, the agricultural needs and with other town goals as well. It's not, this can't be, you know, totally one-sided, but at the same time, if we want to be an agricultural committee, we have to also give, you know, farms the tools they need to be successful. As Tina pointed out, you know, briefly, there are really strong New York State ag and markets law that protect agriculture and ag districts. There are other municipalities that are very close to us that have much more agricultural, you know, friendly terms. And on the ag committee, there's people who operate in those communities and have experienced that firsthand. So I think that we should all at least acknowledge those realities wherever we go from here. The most important part of this conversation, I think, is to establish an ag site plan. Agriculture is not commercial and it's not retail. It's a different, you know, by state law, by the way we treat it in, you know, in the comp plan, we treat it as something different, and we have to explicitly do so, I think, in the site plan process. It's not fair for us to ask the planning department to put a square peg in a round hole, you know, on the few occasions where farmers come before the site plan process. The planning department, you know, they don't create policy or code, you know, they've got to work with what we give them, and frankly, what we have right now is just insufficient. So regardless of the details of what ag site plan involves, the idea that we need a category to me is, is, is very obvious. I think that the, and just to go briefly through some of the rest of it, I think that the idea of, of 600 square foot structures or less being in line with what is required of residential properties makes sense. I don't think agriculture should be thought of as more offensive than residential uses based on how our code encourages it. I think that Tina brought up some very good points about maybe there's a limit to the total amount of these. You don't want to have a 50 acre parcel with, you know, 100 of these structures without any sort of review. So needs to be some, some more careful look. I think temporary greenhouses, you know, those are often very large structures or, you know, relatively for how much ground they cover up, but it's not the same as a, you know, a shopping mall or a restaurant. And, and so I think that, you know, applying commercial standards to those structures is something we should look at. I think that the committee did a good job of recognizing that permanent structures, you know, with, with, with permanent foundations and septics, and especially ones that are open to the public, should have different standards. I think we would have to look at what each, you know, what set of standards apply to each of those situations. I also think the idea of surveys, you know, Tina expressed some hesitancy, which I, I fully appreciate, you know, from a planning standpoint. You don't want to throw out the idea of needing to know where things go and make sure that setbacks and coverage, that all of those, you know, concerns are, are addressed. At the same time, if you're, you know, developing a half of an acre on a 50 acre lot, do you need to survey the whole lot, or, or could you just isolate, you know, that one section when it's very apparent that they're not up against coverage restrictions or anything else? And I think the answer to that is yes, but you have to do it with care to make sure that all the protections that surveys, you know, offer protections and accuracy of, of site plans, that those, you know, still are upheld. I think, you know, as Tina mentioned, we really do have to talk to other departments about this. I, frankly, it was, I wanted to bring this to the, to the public and to the board at this stage, because I respect that, that, you know, staff time. Tina and Chris put a ton of time into this, not only in their memo, but in attending meetings regularly. But if we don't have the board will or, you know, community support, I don't want to bog down the building department or the legal department and the attorney's office, who have a lot of other things to do. And also, in the interest of process and transparency, which has always already come up at this meeting, you know, what's the appropriate page, stage to bring this forward? Frankly, I've already been, you know, sort of accused of doing this in secrecy, and so it's a very fine line. And at the same time, there's people saying that this doesn't, it's not fully baked, which it's definitely not. And so I don't know the right answer to, to exactly when to bring something forward, but it seems appropriate once we have a concept that we want to dive deeper in, on, to talk to the board and make sure we have support before we bog down all those other departments. There is no decision that can be made today, or this week, or this month about any of the, you know, the concepts proposed here. It's just a, a way for us to decide whether to move forward, and, and frankly, I think it's a long time coming. The last thing I will say is that I think that it's very important, as supportive as I am in concept, to support farms and to make sure that we can, you know, retain our agricultural community. I think it's really important that we protect against abuse. As we've seen with so many uses in the town, it's, 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 you know, we can talk, you know, in an idealistic way about what we want to see, but if the, if the code itself isn't written so that we allow for the things that we want to allow for and protect against the abuses, we're going to have problems. You know, if we have people developing properties in a way that, you know, our code allows for, but aren't true agricultural uses, that would be a problem. And so I just want to acknowledge the importance of sort of the enforcement and the details of it all. So with that, I'll turn it over to the rest of the board.
I, I'd like to make a suggestion. So, I mean, we have quite a few more topics left that are going to, you know, have robust discussion. Could we do it this way? Is the board generally supportive? Tina made a statement upfront, at, at a high level, these recommendations make sense. Does the board support that? And maybe we bring this back to the 1216 work session where we really get into the details.
I support that.
Yeah, I, I support bringing it back on the 16th.
I support both concepts, looking at this at a high level, as we are right now, and bringing it back.
Yeah, I mean, my, my only concern and comment on it would be that, like, look, I think the town comprehensive plan goals, that they do support agriculture, but it's also the rural character, and, and agriculture changes over time. I mean, historically, it was harvesting farmland. I mean, that was considered agriculture today, less so. And where agriculture is going in the future will change dramatically. And, you know, you, you can go to locations where you see very intensive farming with entire fields covered by greenhouse structures that are temporary in nature, but aesthetically, you know, are problematic. So I, I do think this needs kind of some more digging into. I appreciate what you've brought forward. I think, look, the goal- into. I appreciate what you've brought forward. I think, look, the goal is on us to be nimble to support our farmers. It's a critical industry out here, beyond just the aesthetic aspect of farming taking place. It supports many industries. But I think we need to look at this, you know, in full respect.
So for myself, I want to thank Ian, and specifically, I want to thank also the Agricultural Advisory Committee. I think they did a very good presentation, particularly at the State of Agriculture earlier spring in setting this up. And that was one of the first discussions. There's many here. I think there are very much reasonable requests and requests I would support with a little bit more definition of them. And I think that's what we're stating, and that's what Tina, you stated what's next. I don't have many red flags on here, but I would like to see some more firm language put in there. As you mentioned, I used Goal Six last night in my Montauk CAC meeting about fisheries in Montauk and ag lands, and how the town is clawing back some of our agrarian roots right now by trying to pull back at least three farms, and, you know, farmsteads in East Hampton recently. It's something that I completely support, Ian. I think what you just presented and how you stated it, it is a long time coming right now. And again, how the code reads right now, it is, you know, a square peg in a round hole. There should be a site plan specifically for the ag use. It's a long time coming. So understanding about the respect of individuals that might be here more for a different topic, I don't mind pushing that forward, but I also don't want to delay it most, so we can make sure we're on that meeting and have a greater discussion. This is something that I would like to talk about, and it's something that honestly, I just, I support.
And maybe Jake at that meeting, I don't know who you're going to assign, you know, what attorney, have that attorney at that meeting as well, so that he'll be, you know, helping draft the code. Okay. So let's switch gears and move on to our third topic, which is the 152 Three Mile Harbor Affordable Housing Overlay Petition for Change of Zone. So if we could let Eric into the meeting, Jason, please?
I'm here.
Okay. I don't see you.
Sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to give an overview of the key issues here in the report prepared by the Planning Department. Mostly going to start by sharing on the screen an aerial photograph of the property. I apologize, GIS actually just went down. I had that where I could scroll in and out. But also, to avoid confusion and keep the conversation on track at the start, I'll start with a simple explanation of the project and what the board is being asked to consider. The town board is not being asked to approve anything today, and as I'll explain later, the board can't until after a public hearing and full environmental review of the project by multiple boards. We are here because this rezoning request is a discretionary action of the town board, so this initial step is just to present the petition that was presented to the town for consideration. This work session is also for the board to get an overview of the project and discuss if it is willing to move forward with a zone change and code change to facilitate this model of affordable housing. The proposal is essentially to rezone two parcels and to construct an affordable housing development over both parcels. In order to effectuate this, the following town board approvals or actions would be needed. Again, not today, but eventually. One, the town board would need to approve a zone change on the parcels to add the Affordable Housing Overlay District designation. Two, the town board would need to adopt a code change in order to contemplate the model of affordable housing development being offered by the applicants and to remedy any potential ambiguity in the definition of an affordable housing unit as it currently exists in the code. And then, three, the town board would need to conduct an environmental review under SECRAs lead agency and ultimately, excuse me, ultimately render a determination of significance. Additionally, and separate from the town board, the Planning Board would need to approve a site plan special permit application. ARB approval would be required and possible EZBA approval if a variance is needed. What I want to do is just quickly stop sharing and switch over to the site plan, preliminary site plan that was submitted for the application. Just give me one second to do that. There we go. Should be able to see it in a second. So currently, the project is designed as one site that combines the roughly 3.7 acres of 152 Three Mile Harbor Road with roughly 3.1 acres of 33 West Drive into one site of 79 units combined. A total of 46 two-bedroom units and 33 three-bedroom units are proposed. All units are proposed as two-story duplexes, with the two-bedroom units being 402 square feet on each floor, or 804 square feet, and the three-bedroom units being 600 square feet on each floor, or 1,200 square feet total. A centrally located sewage treatment plant, which would be partially located on each lot, is proposed. Access is proposed via driveway with ingress and egress at both Three Mile Harbor Road and West Drive. Two recreation areas, parking, lighting, landscaping, and other improvements will also be included in the proposed project. Whereas all of the existing affordable housing developments approved in East Hampton have been either town-sponsored projects or rental developments with a central authority in the form of a housing agency, the proposed project instead deviates from this as a condominium complex with individual units proposed to be owned by different private entities, and the tenants being renters. It is envisioned that unit owners will be local businesses, and that tenants will be members of the local workforce and the employees of the unit owners. It is proposed and required, under the special permit standards, that all housing units created be for moderate-income families, which means up to 130% of area median income, and that they meet the definition of an affordable housing unit as defined in the code. Individual units are proposed to be sold by the developer at market rate to prospective unit owners, with a requirement to rent out the unit to a qualifying household with a compliant rental price. 33 West Drive is presently vacant. 152 Three Mile Harbor Road contains a single-family residence. Although this home predates zoning, and is historic in the colloquial sense, it has not been designated as being of historic significance. Surrounding properties are predominantly residential property with a mix of uses present across West Drive. So getting into issues related to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECRAs, the proposed project, which includes both a rezoning application and a site plan special permit application for an affordable housing development, is an unlisted action under SECRAs and Chapter 128 of the Town Code. The applicants have submitted an EAF Part 1, which has been reviewed by the Planning Department, and deemed complete and acceptable. The Planning Department recommends that the town board declare lead agency status for this action pursuant to SECRAs. For the purposes of this application, the SECR review must consider the entire action as the rezoning and subsequent redevelopment of the site. The Planning Department and the Town Attorney's Office have collaborated to discuss a general process through which a comprehensive environmental assessment can be conducted, which includes the town board initially considering whether the site may be suitable for an AHO, consideration of a code change, and then referral to the Planning Board for a detailed special permit and site plan review, referral to the ZBA for relief as necessary, may not be necessary, followed by a final review by the town board that considers the potential for environmental impacts from the entire action and the issuance of a decision on the rezoning. So we flagged some legal requirements. As we just mentioned, this is a new model for ownership of an affordable housing development in comparison to those that came before. The majority of affordable housing developments in the town have been established where the developer was a certified housing agency, for example, the Housing Authority Windmill, that continues to manage the project, which consists entirely of rental units through the life of the facility. In such cases, it has been necessary for the developers to seek funding assistance, particularly from New York State Homes and Community Renewal, HCR, which provides a layer of oversight and regulatory safeguards. Although this project does not involve town or HCR funding, the Planning Department believes it is important to ensure that protections similar to the ones they provide are built into the town's permitting and monitoring process. The Town Code does not specifically anticipate the employer-owned housing concept, so it will be important to establish a clear policy and administrative structure to ensure ongoing compliance with the special permit standards and the affordable nature of the development. Additionally, although East Hampton does have one affordable housing development that is a condominium complex, these units are owner-occupied, also different from the ownership model for the proposed project. Accordingly, town staff has come up with several questions for the applicant related to ensuring that it meets all of the programmatic requirements of the Town Code. These were sent to the applicants in a letter. We received a formal response just yesterday, I believe. These include matters to operations, tenant eligibility, leases enforcement, management structure, and other pertinent aspects for the proposed facility. The applicant requested to meet with the Planning Department and go through the questions. However, the meeting could not be scheduled before this session due to timing constraints. The Planning Department will continue to work with the applicants to obtain more details on the proposed ownership and management aspects of the facility. Also, for the board's consideration, is that this would require a code change. The applicant's proposed model differs from a standard affordable housing development in that units would be, would first be sold at market rate to business owners, who would then rent the units at affordable housing rates. In a traditional affordable housing scenario, units are sold or rented directly to the would-be tenants at prices consistent with the town's established affordability limits. As this ownership model is not currently contemplated by the code, to avoid, I should say, as this ownership model is not currently contemplated by the code, to avoid any ambiguity, the code should be amended to reflect the permissibility of this ownership model if the board wishes to move forward. It is possible that additional regulatory controls may also be advisable based on the new model. So getting into consistency with the comprehensive plan and a rezoning to add the AHO. The 2005 Comprehensive Plan recommends that the town retain the Affordable Housing Overlay zoning designation as a mechanism within the Town Code, seek to zone additional areas that meet the eligibility criteria accordingly, and consider allowing additional land to be rezoned AHO upon application of a prospective developer. The 2005 Comprehensive Plan cites the following criteria for consideration when the board is going to designate a property with the AHO. I'll go through them, a few of them fairly quickly. Public water is available on site. Yes, it is. The site is reasonably convenient to public transportation. It's located on a county roadway. The site is not within a flood hazard area. It is not. The size and shape of the site is reasonably suited to the proposed development. Although scale is something that will be considered at the Planning Board level, the lot is basically rectangular in shape and has adequate lot area for the number of units proposed under the code. Development of the site is reasonably compatible with the surrounding uses, I should say. The parcel is situated in an area that's predominantly residential, but which contains a mix of uses, including commercial, industrial, and agricultural uses nearby, most notably Round Swamp Farm in the north, and industrial uses along Springs Fireplace Road, Washington Avenue, and West Drive to the east. Access is present at both the front and the rear of the site, providing the options to direct traffic to the more industrial West Drive or the major arterial road of Three Mile Harbor Road to the west. As noted in the report, the site is large, at 6.7 acres. This provides ample space for an affordable housing development that also allows for adequate screening and buffers. The Planning Department recommends that both the size of the site and the access to two roadways make it a favorable location for the AHO overlay. The Planning Department notes that both the scale of the development and the particulars of site design are commonly key determinants of impacts on surrounding properties. The details of these will need to be determined through the site plan process. However, if the town board has comments regarding elements of the ultimate site plan that they would like to see that are not currently included, they should provide those comments to the applicant at this time. For example, the Planning Department recommends that the site plan accommodate ample screening, as well as maximize areas devoted to open space on the site, so that those areas may both beautify the location and contribute to the quality of life for future residents of the site. Recommend this to the Planning Board during their review. The Planning Department, ultimately, the Planning Department recommends that these lots are consistent with the criteria set forth in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan and are therefore suitable locations for the addition of the AHO designation. With regard to a planning and zoning analysis, these are possibly more issues for the Planning Board, but I just want to go through these quickly, and then I'll conclude. Planning Department reviewed the proposed action and the submitted plans. We offer the following comments. So first, the maximum number of any units on one site is 60. It appears that the project has been developed or designed as one site of 79 units, whereas the maximum permitted density on any one site is 60. However, the Town Code is not clear on what constitutes a site, in quotes. The Planning Department notes the submitted design includes shared access and sewage treatment, and appears to have been designed as one site. The issue may result in a variance being required or the need for a determination from the building inspector. And then, just briefly, as far as dimensional regulations go, setbacks, coverage, things of that nature, this plan that you see in front of you, it does appear consistent with that. Architectural elements, the applicants did submit some renderings, although they didn't submit full renderings and elevations, but we note that the ARB approval will be needed for the project ultimately. The applicant submitted an economic impact study, as it's phrased in the code. The specific special permit standards for affordable housing developments establish the maximum housing unit density permitted as eight units per acre, unless a special permit authorizing up to 12 units per acre is granted by the Planning Board. As an added condition in these situations, the applicants must submit an economic analysis, which focuses on the economic impact of the development on the school district in which it is located. The applicants provided an economic impact study. We note, just briefly, that their findings in it are that the 79-unit development would likely result in an addition, a maximum addition of 80 students in East Hampton Schools. This additional enrollment will be offset by the enrollment trends identified by the applicant that indicates enrollment in East Hampton Schools has been and is anticipated to continue to decrease. And an estimated annual tax revenue generated is just over, well, just about $72,000. As with the economic impact study, a traffic study is an additional requirement under the specific special permit standards if the Planning Board is going to permit over eight units per acre density. The applicant submitted a traffic study prepared by IMEG, formerly Cameron Engineering, which studied, among other things, potential delays for through traffic and delays at the two proposed site access point, as well as the intersections of Three Mile Harbor Road and Morris Park Lane to the south, and Tambar Trail and Springs Fireplace Road to the east. The planning, I won't go into specifics. The Planning Department has identified some aspects of the traffic study that require revision. However, based on the information submitted to date, including the existing roadway conditions and the magnitude of the proposed development, traffic conditions in the area not anticipated to result in the site being unsuitable for the placement of an AHO zone. So, in conclusion, sort of summary comments here, the Planning Department finds that the two lots represent an appropriate site for a rezoning to add the AHO designation. The site meets the criteria listed in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, and an affordable housing development on this site appears consistent with the purposes of establishing the AHO. Also, preliminary review of the site plan finds that a development of the magnitude allowed under the AHO could be accommodated, and a detailed review will further refine the details of the site development to maximize its compatibility with the existing character of the area. The Planning Department recommends that the town board discuss whether it agrees that the site is suitable for the AHO rezoning. However, additional information and further discussion with the applicants with regard to the nature of administration and ownership is needed at this time before a specific code change can be considered. The Planning Department intends to meet with the applicants in regard to this aspect of the proposed project. Once the town board has considered a specific code change to enable the proposed project, the project should be reviewed by the Planning Board.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Does anyone have comments for, questions for Eric before we start comment?
Yeah, one of my concerns is about the Suffolk County Health Department approval, and as far as the sewer treatment plant, how it would be then taking project for one parcel, for two parcels, but acting as, the project right now is coming out of 79 units. 79 units is based on, if it was for two parcels, but the treatment plant would be for two parcels, acting as one parcel, then to, based on the siting. How would that not be a type of sewer district potentially?
It could be. I don't know that the Health Department would require that. The only reason why I think they might do that is because of the condominium model proposed. You have individual pieces of real property, and they might want that to be through sewer district. I do know that other, less number of units, but comparable in a general sense, affordable housing developments have used sewage treatment, and they haven't been required to do a sewer district. But it's a good point, and something that, you know, when this progresses to the Planning Board, would need to be addressed.
Thank you.
Ian, do you want to start us off, since you're the liaison?
Yeah, yeah. First of all, thanks, everyone, for being here. I think it's great to have meetings when the public is, you know, in full participation. I think it's good to see. And I just want to start by talking about the process. You know, I've spoken about this before, you know, already today. It's very difficult to know when to bring something forward. Agendas are always posted on Friday, so word obviously got out that this was in discussions. You know, there's a private developer who has a proposal, asks us for a zone change. I think the appropriate place to discuss this publicly I think the appropriate place to discuss this publicly is at a work session. There's no more public forum than this. And I think, you know, Supervisor Bert Gonzalez has really been very strict about making sure our agendas are posted, information gets out there. And so I think this process is fair and transparent. There's no vote that's going to happen today that this is approved or not approved. And the ask of this board is fairly narrow, it's whether there should be a zone change, the AHO, you know, applied to this this parcel. We're not approving the whole project, we couldn't. This is a, you know, the project, the scale, the design, that's a planning board issue, as a caller pointed out. I do want to say that the need here for affordable housing, I just want to, you know, say it right off the bat, we have a need. Whether this is an appropriate location, or this is a perfect design, or a model, you know, to be determined, but there is a need out there and no one project is going to solve the entire need. We've got to look at all sorts of different solutions, but the need is dire. And we're going to have to look at where we can put affordable housing one way or the other. Many of the speakers today I know and I respect, I'm happy that they're here, I will consider their comments for sure. The farmland to the north of this property, I think it's a real asset to the town of East Hampton, there's no question about that. You know, there's concerns, I think, about the residential streets behind and would a, you know, extending West Drive, what that would mean for the neighborhood. All these things should be looked at for sure. Again, this is the first time we're talking about it publicly, and I think all the comments from the board and the public today are going to make this a better process. The two biggest issues for me with this proposal are, is the structure. I think the oversight and management is a really big deal. We have a lot of questions from the planning department, from the housing department, from the attorney's office. I know there was correspondence that went back and forth, but I think there needs to be, you know, a meeting or several meetings to work out these details. And those details would have to be worked out for anything to go forward for sure. And it remains to be seen whether it can be, because this is a novel approach. I don't think, I'll just say off the bat, I don't think it'd be a fair expectation for the town to bear the burden of vetting applicants. I think that you would, there would need to be, you know, a management company, not only who is used to condominium style developments, but also affordable housing units. A lot of, you know, public comment was concerned about whether this would be a true affordable housing project or not. Well, the only way anything like this can move forward on this site or any other, as far as I'm concerned, is if it was 100%, you know, an affordable housing development. And again, I think those details need to be worked out. The size, 79 units, you know, this, again, it's a planning issue, I think, but there's a reason why we have a cap at 60. We don't want massive developments all in one place. That said, I don't think we would ask them to develop the site in two totally separate, you know, without a connection, because that wouldn't make much sense from a planning standpoint. But I think that's a really big issue, whether it would require a variance, because that cap of 60, this board consciously chose to leave the cap of 60, even as we allowed for more density, because we don't want, you know, massive developments all in one place. And so that's an issue I think that's going to need to be worked out. The employer-based, you know, structure, I think that, I know there's a lot of concerns about that, but the idea that somebody is bringing private funds to help address the affordable housing need, I think is a concept that we have to be open to, whether on this property or another property. It's unique, you know, as we've all, it's already been said that somebody's bringing this type of proposal, but they're asking for zero public funds. They're asking for a zone change, which is not, you know, nothing, but zero public funds. And I think that that's a concept, again, I'm very, very open to, so long as we can, you know, make sure it's a true affordable housing development. And that leads to, I think, that, you know, rents in this model would be restricted, future sales price would be restricted. This is not purely a market rate development as proposed, although they're trying to do it, you know, in a way where they can make some profit. There's a lot of affordability standards in this model that I think are a good start, but it's only a start. I think that, you know, we've also talked about zoning and the implication that only one house could be built here now and this would allow for so many more. I mean, look, that's what our zoning in town is going to do. I mean, we've been, we've been, you know, hesitant against overdevelopment for a long, long time. I'm not saying every, every upzoning that's ever happened is a good one, but the idea of you just made one acre lots everywhere would solve our affordability problem, I don't think that's true either. And so I do think we have to allow for one scale of development or density, you know, at market rate and a different one for affordability. I think that that's a concept I support. What this really, I think, to me comes down to is, I'm going to go a little bit off topic, and that I think we need to update our housing plan for a comprehensive plan. We have a crisis here, I think our comprehensive plan is a little bit dated, and that the most striking part about our comprehensive plan to me is the housing issues have just changed. And so I really want to work with the planning department, with the housing department about updating that plan, so that we aren't doing this on a case by case basis where, you know, I think that, you know, opinions are strong on both sides of it. I think we should look at this as a comprehensive issue for the whole town, which it is. You know, again, planning board would have to review this, I don't think, I'm not prepared to make a decision. I am supportive and appreciative of people trying to solve this problem that is brought forward. I think it's a good thing that we're talking about it out loud, but I think there's a lot, there's a lot of issues, namely, you know, oversight management, what the town responsibility is, and the size are the biggest things that need to be addressed. And I hope that the planning department will meet with, with housing attorney and the applicant to see. And to the members of public, I certainly hope that this will be addressed, again, publicly before there's any vote taken. I don't think there's any sort of sneakiness going on whatsoever. This is, you know, how government, I think, is supposed to work, and I appreciate the conversation.
So, thanks. Because I'm next to you, I'll go next, but I just would like a point of clarification. The board's been asked for support because it would be up to the board to have a rezoning on this property, to put an affordable housing overlay on this property. And it was my understanding that that's the discussion that we're having today and whether we support that or not, is, because I'm prepared to discuss that now.
Well, I was under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there are three asks, right? The zone change to affordable housing overlay district, the code change, and a special permit for up to 12 units. The special permit is, would be the purview of the planning board, but the first two asks are the purview of this town board. And the zone change to AHO and the code change go hand in hand, right?
Correct.
So that's, that's kind of what I focused on, and that's what I'll be dealing with in my remarks, rather than talking about any aspect of the site plan, other to reserve my comments, because I believe, Eric, you said in your presentation that if the town board does have concerns about the actual site plan, should it go forward, that that should be made known before it goes to the planning board, correct?
Correct. Yeah. I think you can defer much of the sort of site planning to the planning board, but, you know, if you have, if you look at this plan and see something that's evident that should be changed, it's helpful to the process and the applicants to state it now.
So I'm going to reserve my right to comment on any specific act, aspect, knowing that that we should be doing that before it goes to the planning board. I also just want to comment, one comment on the comprehensive plan, we did update the comprehensive plan with a comprehensive housing plan just a couple of years ago that is now part of our comprehensive plan. So we're not just judging on what we're doing based on what happened in the 2005 update. We have adopted into the comprehensive plan a new section on community housing. So that's already in the comprehensive plan, that's part of the ideas that I also based my, my comments and my due diligence and my thoughtfulness of what's being asked for this particular board, which is the rezoning code change, to apply an affordable housing overlay onto this particular project. And this project came to us not as kind of the idea that we're talking about with the agricultural potential code changes. This was a developed project that was presented to us to make an affordable housing code, an affordable housing overlay on. So it wasn't a blank piece of property, it has a site plan on it. So I'm going to talk about how I feel and my support for an affordable housing overlay to be rezoned, to be placed on this property. So I'm going to first talk about the applicable framework that we should be discussing this under for me, and that's the affordable housing as defined under the town code. And the affordable housing overlay district has been established in the town code and is intended and supported by three main pillars. One, to create housing opportunities for senior citizens, young families, and persons of moderate means residing in the town. Two, ensure new affordable units are open to the general pool of income-qualified residents. And three, regulate tenant selection through nondiscriminatory public processes. Under the, so therefore, what is my problem and where I'm, see that this project falls outside of those three pillars, is because the units are not available to the general public. Affordable housing under the town code must be accessible to income-qualified residents. The proposed model restricts access exclusively to employees of the purchasing businesses. Such restriction violates the fundamental principles for me of public access and nondiscriminatory eligibility. The employment contingent housing is not compatible with affordable housing standards. Now, I'm not saying it shouldn't exist. What I'm saying is that I would think that, like the agricultural code changes that we're talking about, if we're going to consider projects like this, rather than trying to shoehorn it into an existing code that doesn't quite meet it, because that, the existing affordable housing overlay does not include units sold at market rate in any aspect of it. It's not considering units that are exclusive to employees of a particular business. If we're going to proceed with allowing this type of development, which I'm not commenting on, I think we would need to have a new code section to be able to do this. And I'm not opposed to exploring that. But I think looking at what affordable housing seeks to achieve under our town code is stability independent of employment. And that's why it's only by income restriction and not by who you work for. And I think we're restricting a very important parcel, and perhaps other important parcels, from the general pool of folks who can no longer afford to live here, community members. And I think that that is outside of the definition of an affordable housing overlay district. So I refer back also to a memo that was drafted in 2024 by Eric, when the, and is on the town's website, specifically addressing the concept of employer-sponsored housing. And that memo stated, employer-sponsored housing is not equivalent to affordable housing as defined in the AHO. The town would require, which is what I just said, a newly independent structured code section if it wished to authorize employer-provided housing, and the existing code provisions, including the AHO, and this has been mentioned, does not provide a regulatory framework suitable for employer-tier housing. Because the purpose, regulatory structure, and beneficiaries of employer housing differ from public affordable housing programs, I believe the town must maintain clear policy and a legal distinction between the two, in order to protect both. The recommendation for the creation of a new code section rather than expanding the AHO reinforces that employer-provided housing falls outside of the town's affordable housing definition and legal framework. The idea that your housing is connected to your employment, I think, is the opposite idea of general policies that are sound planning practices for affordable housing. So even talking about, you know, we're talking about town-enforceable affordability covenants, and we're saying that there'll be no town money involved, and that's a good thing to have private, totally private developers come in, because, you know, using taxpayers' dollars or the 1% tax, we can, we can use that perhaps in other developments. But I don't believe it's a zero cost to the taxpayers of the town, due to the regulatory framework that the town then, without a manager, would be taking on to be able to ensure that there's no abuses in this and that the covenants and restrictions are being followed. So I don't think that it's actually at no cost to the town. I think that the businesses will independently determine eligibility and occupancy, and that eliminates public regulatory oversight unless we create one. Market rate development produces, and this is very important to me, developments at market rate and sold at market rate produce no affordable units, additional affordable units under the town code, which I believe we are bound to. As the developer would construct and sell the units at market rate prices. No affordable units would be created, so how do you create an affordable housing overlay for this particular project then? I believe that employer housing would serve an important need in the community, and that's business needs, because our business can't exist without employer housing, but not community housing needs, which is what is being asked of this board to put a stamp on this project as it exists. And the town code defines affordable housing as a community-serving tool designed to meet a public need. The problems I have and the fears, and I think the structure of a new section in the town code for this particular model, and why that's important, is because beyond the local code requirements, employer-owned housing raises broader policy issues that we have yet to discuss and present in public. One is that tenants may face displacement due to workplace disputes, seasonal slowdowns, any type of loss of employment. The employer, therefore, has disproportionate power, in my opinion, over both employment and housing stability. Those two things coupled together is, to me, a bridge too far. Totally understand power of employment, but then when that relates to moving that forward to housing stability in the town, I think we need to take a look at a new code section. The housing is not portable, it's not secure, it undermines long-term residency and community stability. The units, as I've said, are not available to the general public and do not increase housing opportunities for the community. And therefore, I think these structural characteristics further distinguish employer-sponsored housing from true affordable housing, which prioritizes for our community members independence, stability, and full public access. So therefore, in conclusion, for me, based on the provisions of the town code, the regulatory intent of the affordable housing overlay, the findings of the 2024 memo and the questions raised in the memo today on the proposed model of employer workforce housing, for me, it does not meet the definition of affordable housing. Therefore, it does not qualify under the AHO for any existing town, or any existing town code housing program. And while it is important, as it does serve as a private business purpose, it doesn't serve as a public housing need purpose. So for me, before we would approve, I don't think an affordable housing overlay approval is appropriate. I think we need to look at a new code section completely for employer-tiered units purchased at market rates with rent up to 130% AMI, with employer-based eviction provisions that cannot be classified, counted, or treated as affordable housing in the town in planning, zoning, or a policy context. And for me, it falls outside of the intent, as I said, and definitions of the affordable housing overlay. Thank you, Kate.
Who wants to go next?
Sure, I'll go next. Look, as it pertains to, does the town have the ability to rezon this as an AHO? Yes, I mean, undoubtedly we do. And I appreciate that for residents in any area where that might be the case, that is going to be problematic, because truthfully, we all have the element of NIMBYism. None of us want affordable housing in our backyard. You know, this goes from this type of development through to ADUs. You have, you know, even the concept of changing the code to allow, you know, individual homeowners to build affordable units on their property is problematic to some. So, you know, I appreciate that there's going to be concerns for anybody when you introduce an AHO in an area, but does the town have the ability? Yes. Is there a need definitively? Look, I think Ian stated it well, like, the housing issue we're facing in this town is so incredibly problematic that I have employees coming to me for the town and my own business struggling to find housing. And just operationally, with regards to the town's long-term well-being, we are at a point that we have to take action, we have to take dramatic action in order to meet those needs and house people. So, you know, in terms of this kind of, this lot specifically becoming an AHO, So, you know, in terms of this kind of, this lot specifically becoming an AHO, yes, I would be supportive of that. You know, the concept itself, I'll diverge from my colleague. I'll speak to some of the, you know, concerns I have and some of the, you know, more positive aspects to it. Look, I think that the concept of employer-owned affordable housing is not as novel and unique as we think it is. I mean, where I originally grew up in the UK, you had Bournville that was developed by the Cadbury's family. In the US, you have Pullman in Chicago, you have Hershey in Pennsylvania, Coleran, Wisconsin, all were developed by private employers to provide quality housing to their employees. I think that concept is relatively a good one. And I think, as my other colleague said earlier, like, look, we are not going to address the housing issue we have out here without private intervention. Look, we as a government, and you all comment about it frequently, that, you know, we don't move fast enough for you in building apartments. That is the nature of our operations. If we're going to fix this genuine problem, which I do believe is the primarily problem we're facing out here as a town, both in the immediate and the long term, we have to acknowledge the ability of the private sector to address that. You know, in terms of how this specific proposal would function, I do have some concerns. You know, look, I think when we are delivering affordable housing, my hope is that as many residents as possible are year-round. I think we had the one speaker today talking about, you know, the issue of first responders. I'll say myself, and, you know, from my own firehouse that I volunteer in, is that, yes, we are losing people. The average age structure in our first responder units is getting older, and it's not being replenished as fast by younger people as we need it to be. That needs to happen. We could go to the private sector, you know, to address that. That's going to result in significantly higher costs to you as taxpayers. I prefer volunteer service. That's just me as a person. Protections for employees are very important to me. If we're talking about, you know, employer-owned housing, that the idea that someone could be fired and lose their housing immediately, you know, that's challenging. I think, you know, we had an earlier speaker on a different topic about St. Michael's Housing introduce the concept of, you know, a town-appointed committee that oversees all kind of affordable housing projects. Maybe that's something this could fall under, because I think the last thing any of us want to see is any town residents or employees being unfairly evicted from properties. So, you know, if this is the model that does move forward, I think the regulation needs to be there for the, for the properties as it stands. I do think, very importantly, the issue of the traffic is, it needs to be brought up. I think, you know, this needs to be reviewed as an AHO possibility with the highway superintendent to ensure that they agree with the access. I know historically, we've had issues on some areas with this. The operations to the north, I know there's been traffic accidents up there. We've had the public reach out to us with concerns for some of the operations that take place on, in some of those areas. So, look, I do acknowledge traffic is there as an issue. I think it's incumbent on this project and other operators in that area to address the traffic problems as we see them. But I think that, you know, this is to move forward in AHO, the traffic study needs to be kind of very clearly defined. But overall, I'm supportive of this parcel potentially being an AHO.
And supportive, okay. Is that all we're asking today, Brittany? Is, I mean, again, I know that there are, I'm just trying to focus it on what the, what the asks are of the town board today.
What you have before you is a petition for a rezone from the applicant. What is being asked of the town board is, are, I'll start by saying, a rezone petition is a legislative action that the town board is the only authority that can enact. So, we're asking whether the town board is favorable moving this forward, which at this point is saying is going to require more conversation with the applicant to determine whether or not this model that they propose is something that is feasible or advisable. So at this point, it's whether or not, which would also entail a code change. So, is the town board supportive of continuing consideration of this application that's before you?
For an AHO and for a code change to allow the model that they've brought forward to be able to be utilized?
Correct. The petition is intrinsically, the projects are intrinsically tied to each other, the AHO and the application for the proposal, the proposed site.
And that's why, under SECRE, we're reviewing them together.
Yes, under SECRE, even, under SECRE, we cannot separate them. We cannot segment them.
So my comments here about process, this is not the only petition for affordable housing that's happening within the town government on Long Island today. I think there's another one up island. I saw that on Channel 12 News. To bring it to the format where we were discussing it publicly is the best way to do so. You got to give the opportunity for the factual basis for either a developer to work with the town, to come together with the process to bring to the town board for open discussion. And this is an open discussion. This is a long way to any potential action being taken, because there's numerous steps that would have to be here for code changes, for planning, open board, planning board, ARB, and others, if this decided to go forward. So there's many opportunities on any type of code change to speak at public hearings going forward then too. So I do think the process has been appropriate here. While it might be jarring, it has been appropriate. There's two actions here. I think I'll go to, my biggest challenge right now is the second action that's being requested is about the type of model or business model that's being formulated here. I still have a lot of, lot of concerns about it. I would love to request to see the offering plan. I haven't seen the offering plan. A lot of that has come out in discussions here about how those protections on guardrails might actually be there to keep this affordable. I understand what Councilmember Rogers was saying about how it ties back to the code. I'm not assured of that, because I haven't seen it yet either then too. It does make me nervous that this, these competing factors here right now are not going to make it affordable long-term, and that it'd be challenging for businesses, businesses to actually thrive in this one or keep it affordable for individuals. I do understand that we need to assist businesses with housing where we can, and that while Tom mentioned, this is not a novel way to go about affordable housing for businesses in other areas, it, even the township businesses do by houses here, has to work within what the town code is and our comprehensive plan. So I'm very challenged to move on, move forward on that right now, this time. I don't know how the long-term affordability would be guaranteed. I think very simply, it comes back to me as far as an AHO, an affordable housing. I think we all know there's a crisis of affordable housing that's been here for decades, and I believe there's been mistakes by town boards in the past about site plan reviews, not allowing it on properties in the past, or for downzoning or upzoning of properties on there then too. As far as this property, this is an attractive targeted location potentially for AHO as it is within the 2025, sorry, 2005 comp plan. But the scale of this development is also challenging right now too. Affordable housing comes in different sizes, different looks, different needs, different necessities, all different, all the way through. Doesn't mean it has to be incompatible development. Goal seven, the town, goal seven of the town's comprehensive plans states that the town has to protect historical buildings, neighborhoods, landscapes, scenic vistas, for incompatible development. Next to this property, you have a bicentennial farm, and it's one of the only, it's the only one I know of in the town of East Hampton, maybe one of the only of a handful, if that, on Long Island and New York State. There's not many either then too. That defines historical buildings and neighborhoods then too. I have, I'm challenged to see that the scale of this development at this location as presented to the town board in this petition, which is legal and valid, is not incompatible development as based on the town code. So as far as an AHO, yes, it's an appropriate location, but what is appropriate for the model of, of the type of development or where it would be placed in the town code under affordable housing, I, I'm not supporting that right now. That's my comments.
Thanks, David. So affordable housing is a pressing issue. I mean, we all agree that, and I'm sympathetic to business owners that are looking to house staff, but I don't believe that this is the right model. For me, it's not affordable housing, it's employer housing. And the executive director of the Housing Authority in her comments said, you know, there should be one owner, agent, or manager ultimately responsible for the entire property for effective management to ensure conformity with the special permit conditions. I also think that, you know, commenting for the special permit, 79 units is just, just not, as David said, it's not compatible, it's incompatible development. So when I'm looking at these two together, the zone change to affordable housing requires the town board to do a code change to make a for-profit developer and, and develop condos. And in this model, the way it's presented, I'm not comfortable with it and don't want to move forward with it.
So Brittany, is there any motion moving forward as far as the petition that has to be done by the town board?
No, it's a, this is a discretionary action of the town board. The town board doesn't have to consider it. It was brought forward just for informational purposes, and so the town board can make an informed decision as to whether they would be supportive of the petition.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we need more guidance? My, my opinion is, I agree with the planning department, attorney's office, and the housing department that we need more information, but I think we should get that information. I don't know, I think I might be the minority.
Well, there's two things. This is a petition for one location, but there's other-
With the project.
With the project, and that's why, that we're looking at these two requests in this petition, part of the regulations for SECRE. But this actually, format and business model is going forward in another location when there's already an AHO. And yes, I think that the information you just requested there, I enumerated, should be brought to the town board also, because at some point, there might even be a code change for that also.
I just want to clarify, you can make a decision at this point not to move forward with the application.
This particular application. And I just want to clarify, we're not being, we're being asked to make the, put the affordable housing overlay and make a code change on a property for a particular project.
Right, so the rezone request has to be justified. So when you're asking for a zone change, there has to be justification. The justification was the, is the project, the public purpose of the project.
Right.
They're intrinsically tied to each other.
Just to be clear, I'm responding to that, that guidance, that I am considering an affordable housing overlay for this particular project at this particular location.
Yes.
So-
There's nothing-
Right, with this particular model.
Correct.
Right, because they already had established-
The town always has the authority to initiate a zone change on its own. It's just you're being asked to consider this project that's before you.
Right, so I just want to be clear on that, and you clarified that for me. So we're not talking in theory or in general for any particular property. We're being asked to consider this for this pro, for this particular project, because the project was baked when it was presented to us. Tina?
I'm sorry, can I just add a nuance?
Sure.
So there's whether or not the site's applicable for AHO, right, that's one. The second is, is this employee model, employer-owned model, something the town board wants to consider for this site, A. But B, remember, we have 350 Panago Road progressing through the planning room process. It's the same model. So I'm hearing today that there's not a lot of support for this model, and if there's not, then that also impacts that project. So it, I know it's complicated, right? So there's a series of layers to this. So when you're thinking about whether or not this code change is appropriate, I would ask you, think about it, yes, as it's linked to the site that we're talking about now, but also as it applies to the town, right? Because a code change would apply to the entire town, and there is another application for 350 Panago.
For me, it's, it's, the site is a consideration, and I read in the memo that there needs to be more information. I, in the beginning, reserved my comments on the actual site as it's planned, but for me, it has to do with the model. And whether that falls under affordable housing, or if it should be a totally separate new code section that has its own set of regulations and guardrails and specifics- Density. Density where that's available. And I, I am in favor of that discussion, but I, going through the affordable housing overlay, the intent for the general public, as, and for the reasons that I've stated, is that this, to me, rather than create affordable housing access for the general community in perpetuity, rather restricts it to a certain group of people called employees. And even if that person who could live in that place, that unit, for five, 10 years, loses that employment, then they no longer retain the ability to live in that unit. And that's contrary to me, to the goals of the affordable housing overlay and affordable housing in general. I don't think it affords a stability that, that should apply. For community housing.
Pretty straight from me, on the specific petition, on the specific location, the two code changes right now, I'm not ready to move forward, but understanding that this location is a location that could be an affordable housing overlay at some time, potentially in the future. I hold, I hold that he comments for that for any other later time. But as far as the model for other locations, further discussion is definitely warranted. But for this specific petition, I have no intention to move forward.
So where do we, so where do we, where does this all shake out? It sounds like we don't have the desire to move forward with this petition right now, but there is a majority who wants to look into the model. I think very thoughtful questions were put forward in the memo from the town.
But yeah, there's two pieces, right? Do we have majority support for this, these lots to be AHO-defined irrespective of this application?
You can't, you can't separate it.
It's not the request.
It doesn't allow you to.
They're intrinsic, they're together. You can't say, yes.
We were presented with a project, not with just a location, right? And even with, using the ADU, you're not coming in, we're not coming in saying putting an ADU on 7 Grant Avenue. It's across town. So because there was a project attached to this request, it's for that-
Understood, understood, yeah. No, I, I, I think that's totally valid. I think, you know, yes, that project's there, but now we have this in front of us as a board with housing where it is, is it not worth kind of that deliberation of like, look, should this lot be rezoned as AHO irrespective of this project?
I think that's a later discussion from this.
I think that's a different discussion.
We have a petition in front of us right now.
Yeah, okay.
I also just want to say that we did discuss maybe a year ago, I think one time it was called workforce housing or middle-income development. We didn't have support at the time. I'm totally happy to open that back up if there's, you know, board support. That was associated with 350 Panago as the original way to try to, and I think that there may be a way to discuss that, that has sales going directly to individuals at a, at a higher sales price, but still with some sort of cap of appreciation. Complicated concept, but I'm just saying that, you know, we can talk about a different code change than just the one with the affordable housing section. And there was already something on the table, and I'd be happy to bring it back.
I, I think there's a lot of incentives available that, in doing the due diligence for this project in other areas, that incentivize in, in different ways, employer-sponsored housing, both on the supply side, on the demand side. And I think that if we're going to explore the employer housing, we should, we should take a comprehensive look of what types are available and, and evaluate what we think would be appropriate for our town. I agree.
If I, if I could pipe in, Ian, I recall what you're talking about, and I thought that that ended because there wasn't support to move forward with that model. I feel like we've kind of come full circle, because we stopped with that model because there wasn't support, and then 350 Panago still kind of was going slowly through the process with an interpretation that maybe it was permissible under our code. But now that I'm hearing this discussion, I think we're back to, we needed code change, we probably need a new whole section of code, and that employee model already did not gain favor. So I just want everybody to recall those details. I wasn't that involved, I don't know why that failed, but I think if we were going to go back, we'd probably start, we'd have to start with that, right? Because that was pretty tailored to this proposal, and come back to the board with a developer-informed responses to kind of the comments we've already issued as concerns, and see if that gains more traction. I just want to remind everybody, we already did go through that discussion and it didn't.
Yeah, I believe the applicant at that time withdrew the request-
Okay.
-for the rezone of this board.
Right, okay.
Correct, and went to a different board, under a different set of circumstances that they believe apply. I'm not going to opine on that.
Yeah.
Well, no, I think they were asking for a code change, because it was, they, they thought they would need the code change into the project. It was then, I think they determined-
That they didn't need the code.
Right, because, but we didn't, we didn't support it. And I think that that, a lot of work went into that proposal, but it wasn't anywhere near, you know, halfway there. I think it's important to note, though, that there's nothing that restricts these units to only employers owning them. That's what people assume is going to happen, but I could buy one and rent it to whoever, you know what I mean? That's not, it's not an actual restriction that it has to be owned by employers, it's just-
It's the market rate.
Yes, that's what they think would happen, but it's just important to differentiate.
That's how it's been presented.
No, I, I, I understand, but it's not, it's not a true restriction. It's a contemplation of what is the likely, you know, outcome or, you know, owners of these units.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'll note even on that front, I mean, like, look, the letters of support we've seen from Southampton Hospital, you know, local businesses that, you know, I think are critical to our town's well-being, you know? And our inability to find adequate housing for them is incredibly problematic. And so I, I just, I, I don't want to put this to bed. Ideally, I, I want this kind of possibility to remain open as a concept.
So then again, the discussion is profitability, right? If you can offer sales of these units, and I'm talking totally outside of this conversation. I'm just talking theoretically, kind of, kind of in response. Then perhaps you look at models where the, the units are sold at a certain percentage below market rate rather than at market rate. There's so many options available. That's a really broad discussion that I think we really should, I, I, I am fully supportive of bringing that forward.
So Amanda, I think you heard it from Katie Casey, is that even with the large units that are, are being built in town, there is actually capital investment from investors to make money on affordable housing, but potentially at a lesser yield on there. That's already a known in affordable housing. This is just a different one for the town to see. On this petition, that's still where I stand and on my move forward, you know, to the next topic.
But the projects Katie Casey was talking about all involve funding from state or federal sources, which is the, it's a big, it's a big difference.
That's not how she's going to, looking to do the Route 114. She's looking to do the Route 114, you know, working with the community housing fund.
Well, I'm just, I'm, well, okay. So outside funding sources that aren't only private. So it is a different, it's a different type of thing entirely. That's all.
Okay. So I'm hearing there is support to continue to look at this model, right?
I'm, I'm supportive of looking at all new, new type of affordable housing models or, or opportunities that might be out there on this specific petition.
Yes.
That's my concern.
And I also today, and we've talked about it before and it came up last night at my East Hampton CAC. To Charlie Niggle's point where, you know, we allow apartments over commercial structures.
Completely.
We need to look at the code for, you know, agricultural properties. If he's got a barn and he can put a couple of affordable apartments there. I think that's, for us, that's low hanging fruit and that's something we should be looking into.
Well, I agree. And when I, when I say update the, the housing plan and comprehensive plan, I think Kate's right that I think based on the community housing fund, there was, you know, a plan submitted, but it's not, it's not holistic. In talking to the planning department, housing department, I think that we need more and can dig even deeper and should address things like that. I think we should look for solutions wherever they are.
Yeah.
A lot of good solutions, you know, above a barn or ADUs. I think we should look at all these things. And I think it would, it should be a bigger study.
If a particular business has the ability, or a school has the ability to put affordable housing on their own property for their employees, for me, that's something we should be exploring. But again, these are looking for us to create codes that, that work for these. That consider the, the possible abuses and squarely put who's going to manage this and how they're going to remain affordable in perpetuity, which is something, you know, we talked about the original affording, affordable, affordable housing development of Wellbone. And those thoughts weren't kind of fleshed out where the, and, and that's not a bad model either. Where people, we, but, you know, we give people the land, they build a house. So with their own resources. So I, I just think we should explore anything we can explore.
But just, just to your comment, if you don't mind saying, I'll put my cap and I'll, I'll be done with this. Supervisor, as far as the word abuses, yes. And that's looking for guardrails, but there's also a lot of positives too that we should be looking at as proposals coming forward too. Not just a no, but how could it potentially happen, this situation?
Incentives as well, yes.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you, Tina.
Supervisor, I think with all the back and forth, it would be proper to table this at this time to decide whether or not the board needs to take any final action with respect to the petition that's in front of us. We can table it till next meeting, just to decide whether a motion needs to be heard.
Oh, you, you, it needed a resolution?
Well, because the town board is hearing it, we have to, we have to determine whether or not we actually have to notice a public hearing at this point. Because there's been back and forth.
Okay.
Procedurally, we just want to make sure that we're doing this correctly. So if you, we table it for one week, we can, or I'm sorry, one work session, we can determine whether or not any final action, whether or not we need, we need to have a final action, whether or not there needs to be a public hearing before that final action takes place. Final action being a denial of the petition.
Okay.
Or approval of the petition.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we are going to move on. And I don't know, folks, why don't we take a minute break? Because I know there's folks. All right. LTV, we're going to take a five minute break.
Okay. I will put a graphic on the screen and all will be well. Thank you.
And we are live.
Thank you, everyone. We're back to our work session. And before I invite Tom House up to make a proposal from Hampton Pride, I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge that yesterday was World AIDS Day. For many in our community, this is a day that reopens a wound. It brings back the faces of friends, partners, children, siblings, neighbors. It brings back hospital rooms, empty chairs at dinner tables, and decades of fear, stigma, and heartbreak. That pain still lives here. It is carried quietly by people who survived the epidemic and by families who never stop missing the ones they lost. The Trump administration canceled its World AIDS Day observance this year. And for many who lived through the worst years of this crisis, that decision felt like a dismissal of their grief. It felt like being told again that their lives, their losses, and their loved ones were not worth recognizing. That is a deep hurt, and it deserves to be named honestly. But here in East Hampton, our community did what the administration would not. We came together. At the Hampton's Pride Names Project at LTV, we remembered. We read the names. We touched the quilts. We shared stories that are painful but sacred. We stood with those living with HIV today and with those who still carry the trauma of the years when so many were lost. I want to thank Hampton's Pride and everyone who attended. East Hampton will not look away from the pain this epidemic left behind or from our neighbors who still carry their lost loved ones in their hearts every day. Your grief is not invisible here. The community, this community refuses to let silence take the place of remembrance. We honor you, and we honor every life that should still be with us. And again, Tom, thank you, and Hampton's Pride, your organizers, for a beautiful event over the weekend at LTV.
Oh, thank you so much. I was going to say something similar, not as eloquent. Thank you for doing that. And I did bring 10 students there yesterday on a field trip from Bridgehampton School. And they viewed the quotes, they saw the movie Philadelphia and discussed it. And that complaint that a lot of people of my generation, that, you know, kids don't know anything about the AIDS pandemic, not true for 10 students now, so it's good. It was an experience none of us will forget, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coming to the event.
Okay, so you have, we're gonna have Amory pull up your PowerPoint presentation. And you're gonna, we did this a couple of years ago, but we've got new board members in the community. You know, we want to refocus because I know that you have, you want to move forward and you want to know what works and what doesn't.
Yes, and it was actually at the recommendation of Tina that we, what we need is a resolution to accept the design concept so that we can then go on if we need to go to the planning board, et cetera. And also to fundraise, like we need an official town resolution that says, yes, we accept this design concept. And I want to follow that up with, I am re-meeting again to represent this project to the Wayne Scott Sisters Advisory Committee this Saturday, so.
See you there.
Yeah, yeah, so this is our second presentation. At the first time, it was met with approval, but there was nothing official. You know, it was just all verbal approval. And then when the board changed, Sylvia and Peter left, I met with Ian and with Tom. And I presented it to them, you know, individually. I think together, we were in a room together. So, but since then, you know, things have changed, right? So here we're presenting again. All right. So that was two years ago, that presentation. And if the contributors, I'm president of Hampton's Pride, I'm doing the presentation, right? Gustavo Bonavardi is the artist that we've contracted with. Renowned artist and architect. Ken Lesbader also originally presented with us. He is one of the foremost voices on historic preservation projects, especially LGBTQ historic preservation, historic sites preservation. So this all started with an article in The Star in which, when the property was finally, you know, came into the town's ownership, there was an article in The Star in which the then-chair of the CAC said that, you know, we recognize this as an historic spot, you know, for a gay disco. And we are going to devote one of the benches to, you know, of the memory of LGBTQ plus people there. And so if you'll see, I wrote, you know, my heart just dropped. You know, it's like, okay, what kind of bench could possibly commemorate the 25 years of history there? But also, to the surrounding environment, the attic was up the road, right? And that had been there since 1970. The swamp started in 1977. There were other bars that weren't gay-owned and operated completely, but they were very gay-friendly. And so there is 50-plus years of LGBTQ history along what was called the Miracle Mile, but, you know, certain people called it the Miracle Mile. So we think of this because, you know, this is the only spot, and it's the last gay club in the Hamptons. And, you know, what are the chances that there'll be another one, right? That, what an opportunity, because it's a town park. We could build something there. That could be the repository of all that history, right? Ending with the swamp, ending in terms of the, you know, the, that era. Ending with the swamp, and we have the opportunity to build something right on that spot. So that's very poetic, I feel, a lot of people feel. That right on the very spot, you know, we had the Saskas surveyors come and map out exactly where the black box disco was. It's 50 by 50, and we have, you'll see the markers there. So that were, our design stays right within that spot. In fact, it doesn't even occupy the whole spot. But once again, I wrote this article, and, you know, it goes back to the movie Almost Famous, if you've ever seen it. Kate Hudson, you know, she became a star with that movie. And she's a groupie, and one of her friends just like, you know, you know, be real, this guy traded you in a poker game for a case of beer. And she starts to cry and then says, well, what kind of beer? So that was my feeling. Like, I read this article, felt a tear, and I was like, well, what kind of bench could it be? This article was read by all the right people. And if you'll see on the next slide, I had a first meeting with Sarah Davison, with Carolyn Logan-Glock, the then-chair, and some other people. And we walked through the green, and they got it right away. You know, that, oh, yes, it has to be more than a bench. So, but then the question was, well, who's gonna pay for that? You know, who's gonna pay to put something there? So that's when I incorporated Hampton's Pride in 2021. And our mission to celebrate and commemorate the extends LGBTQ plus people and their allies. Our founding goal, I want to stress, was to create and maintain. We're signed on for maintenance, the Wayne Scott Green Design Project and within the footprint of the swamp. We are a 501(c)(3) public charity. We got, within seven days of the person who filed the paperwork for us, we got our letter of determination. Even he didn't believe it. He was like, no, it's a mistake. I was like, no, here it is, PDF. And you know, of course, that we've expanded. Six months after we incorporated, I got a call from the mayor saying, would you please plan a pride parade? And we gasped and said, yes. And you know how many people turned up for that first parade is on the next slide. Well, it's in the background. So that was our first time out in 2022. And East Hampton, you are the first town on the East End to ever close its main streets for a pride parade in history. So, and that was in '22. We're about to have our fifth annual this coming June. We've also expanded into the Hampton's Pride Film Series and our annual World AIDS Day commemorations, so. So a little bit about the Club Swamp, the original CO, 1.12 acres, as now Wayne Scott Green, was granted in 1977 for that one-story black box disco. You know, had the chrome railing, smoked mirrors, famously known as the swamp. The next year, it was expanded with a barn light structure that became the annexed restaurant. It's a courtyard that united them. And it was surrounded by tall cheese and a high fence. No mistake, right? Because in the '70s, it was risky to pull into that parking lot, right? And it was there for 25 years, so a generation there. One of the most popular spots for LGBT community, as well as for many celebrities. And I was trying to be funny in the last presentation with choreophiles, which just means people who love to dance. It remains distinguished as the last and longest-running gay club in the history of the Hamptons. It's actually the longest-running gay, longest-running club of any stripe in the Hamptons, so. So the next slide, thanks to the efforts of, you know, who's better than I, East Hampton Town Board, Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee, and the Georgia Pond Foundation. The site is now the Wayne Scott Green Rick Dale Master Memorial Park. What an extraordinary gift, enormous potential for the Wayne Scott community, East Hampton Town, and for the Hampton's LGBTQ plus people and their allies. In the original management plan, you'll see that these are, this is taken right from it. It was our intention to provide an attractive gateway to the business district and attractive central sitting and walking area that is easily accessible to pedestrians from the business properties east of the site, which is, I think, planned in the future to be connected by a sidewalk. And maybe a bike path, I think, behind, that goes behind the IEEE Gallery. As planned, right now, it stays in that southwest corner, connected to not dominating the green. As big as it may seem when we zoom in on the details, it remains a modest proposal. The dance floor structure takes up 2% of the park's 1.12 acres. There was, is increased interest in the park due to proposal. We have lots of, lots of feedback, all positive, that we have received on social media for us from when the renderings have been distributed. Okay, on the next page, and it talks about the project funding and reciprocal local support. This project will be realized through donations to Hampton's Pride at no cost to the town. To date, through just soft-launch fundraising, right? We have not broken ground yet, right? That's when we'll be able to really, really get the big donations. We have $150,000 to get started. We have established a record of successful fundraisers. I've seen you at several of them, including annual summary events at Longhouse. This will ensure project completion and ongoing maintenance. Those, those events are just getting bigger. And we're, we were, we're going to, once, you know, this is a definite thing and ground is broken, we are going to have fundraisers specifically designed just for this project. We're committed to working with local contractors, and we expect Hampton's Pride project to be a local source of revenue, both for the building of it and for the maintenance of it. And we're already, we've already experienced that kind of reciprocity. There's been a number of landscape design companies that are very interested in working on this project. And I feel like I shouldn't name them, but I think some of you know who they are. The development of the design proposal, so these are the markers. This is the old '70s swamp logo that was engraved. This is what Saskas, they measured it out, and we have these bronze markers made. They're in the ground now, just to, you know, you can see. If you go there and walk around, you'll see the project will be inside those markers. We contracted with Gustavo, it's four-plus years in the making now, you know, that this has been going on. We have lots of faith that it's going to happen. Gustavo Bonavardi, we contracted with him in 2022. We had the place surveyed. From its conception, the project was developed in close conversation with town officials, local businesses, the Georgia Pond Foundation, and especially the Wayne Scott Sisters Advisory Committee. We're continuing that discussion. I was on the phone, thinking I would be late. I was on the phone with members of Wayne Scott, trying to feel out what is, what are the thoughts going on, right? And I have more information, so, and more will come out at the meeting this Saturday. The next month after that, and it was, it was, as Carolyn said, when she called in, it was unanimously approved. There was some talk beforehand, but in the end, it was all, yes. Bring this plan forward to the board. And we did, and it was met here with similar approval, though nothing formal. It was voted on at the CAC, but not here. It was, you know, it was like, you know, very nice project, we like this. And then we then vetted it with Joe Palermo at the time and Scott Wilson for, you know, any kind of technical questions, including ADA compliance. And we went back with them to Gustavo, and we worked those out. So the project has three strands. This is what I went to Gustavo with. We want it first and foremost to be a celebratory social area. Just raise that dance floor up, right? From where exactly it used to be, a functional outdoor space, decking area, dance floor that is usable, right? We could have our fundraiser there instead of at Longhouse one day. You know, we could have it just right there. I know there was some concern, it's like, well, we don't, we don't want this to be too much of a draw, right? But, you know, the, and it will be a draw. It's there, this design, there's nothing like it in the world. I will get to that when we talk about Ken Lesbader. However, I mean, the town has control of that, right? You have permitting, and you can say, no, we don't approve this, you know, your, whatever kind of 16th birthday party or whatever, that's gonna have 200 people. That's not what we want, right? Too much noise, too much DJ, whatever. But you do have control over that. I mean, we hope that you'll let us have our fundraiser, you know, once you're there. And we promise to behave. But, but, you know, even say it becomes something like, oh, we have to go see this installation in Wayne Scott. There's control over that, you know, in terms of like who you allow to, to use it. Celebratory outdoor social area, historical marker, and then a memorial garden, right? As we started out with the World AIDS Day commemoration, I can't tell you how many people walked in and out of the swamp that we lost. Some people have already given me money to engrave their son's name in the memorial walkway. And I really have to make sure that happens, right? I mean, okay, so the next, just to let you know about the artists. Gustavo Bonavardi, we are so lucky that we got him. I won't read that whole bio, it's there for you to look at. But done everything from major, major installations, such as, if we can look at the next slide, this is Gustavo, the Tribute in Light, K Downtown. I mean, he designed it with someone else, but this is every year, you know? He's, he's involved with that. So he's done large, large-scale installations, public installations, that are world-renowned. All the way down to the next slide, he's an artist and does watercolors. You might have seen these on display at, the drawing room had an exhibit of his. So I gave these three strands to him, and he came up with the, with this next design. So just remember, as we zoom in, it takes up, what was that, 2%? Was it 2% of the, of the whole parkland area? So there in the middle is your celebratory area, the social space. And you see it's predominantly celebratory, right? To the left of that is the historical marker. That's the, the tetrahedron of pink disco balls. And to the right of it is the memorial garden that we'll weave through with plantings. And you see, like, what, sorry, if I could, yeah, thank you. What kind of bench? I mean, it's a gloriously shaped bench. Okay, so the next spot, I'm sorry, thank you. That shows you where the dance floor will be constructed in relation to the rest of the park. You see, it's off the, it's off the path. And we had originally designed, or Gustavo had originally designed for that of the tetrahedron of pink disco balls, to be in the heart of that. And some people, you know, felt that, you know, that was a sacred space. And so we moved that out, and we moved it to the left where you saw it before. So we moved it off the, off the heart. All right, so what does it look like? Here we go. All right, so these are renderings. The figures are for scale, they are not part of the installation. So that's a shot, you know, looking toward the IEEE Gallery there. You can see that the bench and the plinth that the sculpture rests on are made of the same natural materials, right? Okay, so that's kind of an overall shot, but let's keep going. Here's the park when you're looking at it, you know, from, you know, standing in the middle of the park, right? You're looking at the face of the bench, and you see that there's, there's space between the path that Edwina created and, and the bench. On the next one is a, this is, you know, Gustavo, he's brilliant. You know, songs from the '70s, like that of titles, right? I mean, this will be up for grabs, like, you know, we'll have, we'll vet the song titles, you know? And maybe we have community participation in that, what song titles get to be engraved and carved in that. But, you know, this is like, who would have ever thought of that, right? In the, in the concrete that surrounds the decking, which would be made probably of epa within the, within the concrete. And then if you look at the next one, so when you're on the dance floor and you're looking in, you see that pink, it's glass mosaic, and it's not one color pink, right? It's many shades of pink. And you can't see that pink on the inside of the wall until you're standing on the dance floor, right? It's sort of like, just like when, you know, people used to park, you know, in the, in the parking lot and then run in, and then there was this whole new world inside, right? Very colorful. It, you know, conceptionally, that's the idea here, right? From the outside, you see that natural, beautiful brick wall. On the inside, a whole other world. It doesn't look, it doesn't look, you know, very distinguished right there in that rendering, but Gustavo's made another drawing in the next one. So this is the kind of idea of a glass mosaic. Not necessarily going to be this way, but there's the dates of the swamp. So that kind of glass mosaic, which is used in like, you know, he's, he's been calling companies that, you know, they create like outdoor metro, you know, like designs and stuff. So this is, this is made to withstand the elements, right? So there should be little to no maintenance of this at all. But this is the inside of the bench, right? That can only be seen when you're on the dance floor. It's not written in stone, of course, yet what exactly will be there? But it seems like Club Swamp, you know, probably should be one of the things that's engraved on there. So, but he gave us an idea of, you know, just the complexity of it in terms of the different shades of the color. And so this is the, this is what you heard Carolyn and I think Hersi possibly talking about before. But these are Gustavo's words about why, you know, this is part of his conception, about, you know, why that tetrahedron of pink disco balls. "In a fine historical marker and social area, the pink tetrahedron, the mirror balls will sit on a platform of the same stone as the dance floor bench, while the curving side of that bench facing the dance floor will be a continuous pink mosaic mural. Additionally, QR codes installed in key locations could link to an interactive website, which we would, you know, which we would be responsible for. Not only detailing the site's history and significance, but also offering playlists by DJs who once worked at the club, things like that." Weaving together the other two strands of the project, the marker acknowledges the complexity of the history and emotions involved, but it ultimately strikes an optimistic, even playful note. "This commemoration of Club Swamp in the early days of the LGBTQ plus rights movement celebrates the movement's tenacity and achievements." And then I just, the next slide, just because we zoomed in, just remember, it's occupying that much of the park, right? It looks so big in those other drawings. So the next slide is Ken Lesbader, one of the foremost, as I told you, historic sites preservationists. He's an East Hampton resident, and he came to me having read the article that I wrote in The Star, wanting to help with this project. And he's written that letter that I gave to you. I won't read that whole letter to you, of course, but it's not, it's not a random choice. Pink is not a random choice. And, and the triangle, the tetrahedron, is not a random choice. And so a selection of that letter is on the next slide. Well, there's the whole letter that you have before you. Well, there's the whole letter that you have before you. But let's say white triangle and white pink. The project's use of the triangle of dance floor, first of all, and pink triangle marker are grounded in LGBTQ plus history. You probably know that, you know, in Nazi Germany, gay people were forced to wear the pink triangle as Jewish people were forced to wear the Star of David and the Workhams, et cetera. That was, that symbol of hatred and persecution was intentionally co-opted in the seventies as, as a color and form associated with civil rights pride and celebration. So there's a history of co-opting the triangle and the pink as a symbol of gay liberation. Since then, it has been incorporated into thousands of national and international designs, including LGBTQ plus historic monuments, marketing tools, logos and T-shirts. And we have some examples on the next few slides. So here is LGBTQ plus site-based history projects and studies, some examples throughout the world. And then on the next page, uses of pink triangles. And if we could pause on this one, so the use of pink triangles to commemorate LGBTQ plus history. So here's where Ken is saying that there is nothing like this in the world. If you look at it, the first one is a Holocaust monument in Sydney, right? The second one is a monument to persecution and repression in Barcelona. You know, very, very progressive city, right? Next one, a memorial to gay Holocaust victims in Israel. Sorry, that was the third one. This, this other one in Berlin is a Holocaust, Holocaust memorial. And it's a monument against homophobia in Spain. The last one is the exception. It's an annual pink triangle installation for Pride Weekend in San Francisco, California. And then lastly, you know, just other examples of the use of the pink triangle in the press, clothing, et cetera. I just want to add too, that pink disco balls are fun. A park. It should be fun. Looking forward, you see the QR code there. This is a really important part of it. It'd be like a last phase of putting QR codes attached to a website where people can interact. We also, you know, we have these engraveable memorial paths. I don't know if we had a good shot of the memorial path on there. Yeah, that's my bad. But to the right of the club, there's a, like a sort of a snakey memorial path of paving stones that are engraveable and they will be surrounded by, we hope, native indigenous plantings. The other idea too was around the Jason Lageran, I think some of you know him. He, he and I worked at the Saran together for seven years and he's very interested in this project. He would love to bring some of his ideas about plantings into this for consideration. And, sorry. And his idea was too, that the marker, the, you know, the tetrahedron could be softened up with, in terms of where it's placed and also what's planted around it. You know, in terms of it's being viewed from the road, et cetera. So, you know, we're, you know, Hampton's Pride, you know, we're, I believe, I hope, an increasingly beloved part of the community out here. And we don't want to do anything, right, that people aren't going to love, right? I mean, okay, 90% of the people aren't going to love. We're never going to get 100, right? But we would never proceed if there was like a big uprising against a certain part of this design by local people. We would never proceed with it. We'd figure out a way. We want it to, we want this park to be beloved and used, right? And we want Hampton's Pride to be proud of it. You know, that's our idea too, that we want to create something beautiful and we want to make sure it stays beautiful. And that's why we always said that we would sign on for the maintenance of the project. So, but interactive virtual components. The QR codes could link to different songs, you know, those songs that are represented on the dance floor. People could upload their pictures, you know, like of the past perhaps. And this, of course, I'm sure would be vetted by the town in terms of what, you know, what the public has access to or what the public uploads to. So we're conscious that we can't just have free rein and just put anything up there. But QR codes that were linked to the songs, that would, people could perhaps, you know, if they're using it or they're having a good time, they take their picture and they could upload that. You know, it creates an ongoing history of this, of the use of this public space. And then just, you know, just, I think the, the town and the village are poised. You know, the first town on the east end, the closest main streets for a pride parade happening again on June 6th, 2026, please take note. But also, you could be at the forefront again of national efforts to acknowledge underrepresented history of LGBTQ people with the Hampton's Pride Project. And to quote Ken again, making an invisible history visible on the authentic site where this history took place. And just thank you so much again, all of you for allowing us to present this. One last point, Adrina, you know, who originally did the, you know, design. She's seen this whole project and thinks it'd be nothing, but a beautiful addition to what she originally conceived.
Anybody have questions for Tom?
I don't have any questions. I just have support for you. Seeing this, I know from the original purchase to the Nation Preserve Committee, then the Town Board doing the management plan, and we recently just reheard the change in the management plan to allow for this. I think what is being proposed here is, is reasonable. It would be very much accepted into the location on there and also allow for parkgoers to enjoy the park pretty freely, as you're saying. It's a small percentage of the park. That is, I'm starting to see more and more actively used as a place of respite, you know, to sit down, have some lunch, maybe some individuals in the area. I think there's a connectivity issue and Wayne Scott will continue to look at as we move forward. But overall, the plants, you know, I, I have the continued support for all of what you're looking for here.
Thank you. And thank you, David, for your time. We've looked through this together before.
My pleasure, man.
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, conceptually, I, I think this is great and I'm fully supportive. You know, I, I always kind of have to like look at things differently too. Just maintenance, you know, you, you've mentioned long-term commitments to maintenance. Having a wooden dance floor, that's going to weather and tear.
Well, we're going to use EPE.
Okay, great. So that was a key thing. Yeah. No, I mean, like just, I, I want to do this, but I want it to look right for its whole life and throughout my town here, so.
Yeah. We, I mean, and Gestavo, the artist too, it's, it's got to be impeccable materials, impeccably constructed and maintained.
So I've supported this from the first time you brought it to the board. And again, I aged myself then and I'll do it again by saying that I was here a summer home person in that time period. And I greatly recall the ability to go to Le Mans and other clubs and dance and relax and recreate and be social. And then the friends that I had who were part of the LGBTQ, I'm going to get a little.
LGBTQ and you could add IA plus, you can go on further.
You know, they didn't have that same feeling until they were in the swamp and the annex. And that, that was known back then. And the fact that we could commemorate a space where people who, back then, really kind of were in the closet a lot, afraid of their employers, afraid of family. And of course, marriage wasn't legal. And to just remind people of those times in such a beautiful, positive way and celebrating it. I, I'm still supportive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well and I appreciate, I appreciate your approach saying that you want it to be something that, you know, the whole town likes.
Absolutely. Yes.
You know, and I think that.
We're continuing our conversation to me.
Yeah, of course. I think that's been your approach to things generally and I appreciate it. So I'm supportive. I think the design is, is nice and I can see the space being used. The only thing that I have some reservations about, and I think I mentioned this when we met and it came up, is the tetrahedron. It's a, it's a, it seems like it's fairly, I don't know if loud is the right word, but very noticeable. And I just want to make sure that everything blends. So on that piece for me to be determined, I think that, you know, public broader community support will go a long way to determining, you know, how that ends up looking.
I did, I did speak with Hersi. Is it okay to interject?
Sure.
I did speak with Hersi, telling him to be sure that should this be passed, like the board accepting the design concept, I'm still meeting with the Wayne Scott people. We're not going to strong arm, because we have board approval, we're not going to strong arm our way into building something that the majority of Wayne Scott residents are not going to welcome with open arms, you know? I mean, if there's one or two people, like we can't help that, right? But it, but it's also, it's a world-class design. There's going to be some, there's going to be some pushback, right?
I, I think some measurements so that people can get an idea. Because right now you don't know how tall, how, you know, it's just a photograph. I think measurements would be helpful.
Yes. And that is a point. We do have those plans. But there are certain ideas that I have in mind about what might make everyone, not everyone, but most people happy, right? Yeah.
All right. Well, it's unanimous. You've got the support. So would we need to, Tom's, I think has been advised, Tina, to get a resolution? Since this is town property?
When we talked with Brittany, I think it made sense because there's going to have to be some formal agreement between the town and the organization in order to make sure that they've got permission to site there and the maintenance provisions. So before you, you got to get a license agreement. So I think a resolution to authorize the board to negotiate that.
So we just heard the management plan to add provision?
Yeah, I think that the management plan was amended already, right? Yeah.
We'd be accepting some of the donation of services then too.
So is the, would that be sufficient? Is that your?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We, I think we need an agreement.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think so. And then that helps because I, I think this has to go for site plan approval. So for the planning board to understand that the town board is officially kind of authorizing this, it's going to be a question. So it's better to answer it.
Thank you. Makes sense.
Would that be done today or do you have a meeting on Thursday?
Well, I, well, I think we would first have the town attorney's office draft the license agreement and it would get circulated to us and then we would put a resolution on authorizing the supervisor to sign it.
Gotcha.
That's code for probably not today or Thursday.
Exactly.
But I think you have general support.
You have support.
Okay, excellent. And what do I say to the CAC on Saturday, I suppose?
Well, if they tune in and I'm the liaison to the CAC, so I also.
You'll be there.
Tell them about this meeting.
Okay, great. All right. Terrific.
Beautiful. Thank you. And thank you for your patience today.
Oh, absolutely. Thanks for, thanks for having us again.
All right. Take care. Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay. Moving right along. Is it midnight? What are we, four hours in? We are now going to have an after hearing discussion for chapter 255, modified requirements for ADUs.
For Brian.
And I know we've got Brittany here. I don't know, Tom, if you wanted to open up the discussion.
Yeah. Look, I don't want to spend too much time, given what we've gone through today. We're rehashing like what are identified as the benefits of ADUs. You know, nor kind of the, the need for more affordable housing in the town. I think we all acknowledge that. There are a few kind of quick things here that some were Scrivener's errors that, you know, I, I think we need to address and we'll have to redo a public hearing. We've also received some public feedback with additional recommendations. The one key piece there is, you know, I think Jay Mearing mentioned it, is to include for the allowance of detached ADUs in that 15,000 square foot cap as well. That's something I'm supportive of. We do have potential code drafted for that based on the board's kind of approval. So that could be ready to go should we do public notice as well. But overall, you know, yeah, I just want to, to move this forward and I'll, I'll let Brittany address the Scrivener's errors there.
Yeah, I just want to note if, I guess we haven't had a discussion on the 15,000 square foot. So I want to note the code section that would need to be changed. Okay. Never mind.
So as Tom mentioned, the legislation before you reflects two corrections, the typographical errors that were identified during the public hearing. Those errors were found in 255 1167. Specifically, the first one corrects the maximum size calculation for single-family residents to 7% of the lot area. That should not have read 710%. The 10 was just not crossed out. So it's, that's agreed 7%. And the second one restores the cap of 10,000 square feet where it said 20,000 square feet, which was from an earlier version of the code. Those are the two numerical calculations that were Scrivener's errors and have been corrected.
Well, I, I agree with Tom on this. I think that, I mean, I'm supportive of this legislation. The need is obvious, I think, to all of us. And I do agree that detached, I understand what the ADU committee was trying to do and it seemed maybe more palatable for attached ADUs to have a different standard. But I've heard from the public, a number of people in the public on this and I just don't think it's something that could be, would uphold a challenge if somebody proposed.
ADU committee is fully supportive of the challenge. It actually was the board previously who pushed back.
No, I understand, I understand. This is, this is the threading that needle of trying to make things palatable, but also, so I support that one change. I know there were other changes about, you know, family and residents, but, but frankly, I think that there's already very strong language that says this has to be your, you have to be a resident and this has to be your sole legal domicile year round. So, you know, Brittany, Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's ample protections here that this can't be a guest house or an Airbnb, you know, by the code, even without changing, you know, anything else.
I think we included sufficient definitions.
Yeah, the intention is it's a year-round person. It's their only home. It's not a second home. I think that that's in there. And I think we have to be careful with, you know, drafting code and regulations that we don't, we don't add more than, more than is necessary. And to me, there's very simple language that accomplishes the goal.
So we, Kate, did you report on? Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the change down to 15,000 square foot. I, I only note that, you know, to me, they're not regulations, they're protections. And that's really all I have. I'm glad we corrected the Scrivener's errors. I understand we have to go back to public hearing, which gave us the ability to change the recommendation. So I'm going to take that opportunity and agree with Tom and Ian about being consistent on square footage. I also think it kind of makes it, not kind of, I think it makes it easier to regulate and to ensure compliance. If you don't have two different standards, that may get confusing for people, whether it's inside or outside. I, I don't think that makes a substantive difference. David, did you have?
I don't have any more comments.
There was just a couple of things brought up at the public hearing. It, the code, one of the comments was it says that you get your building permit, then qualify it for an ADU. And they're suggesting that that's backwards, that you should first qualify for an ADU before you get your building permit. That kind of makes sense because then you'd have to get, the building permit would be rescinded. More work fees would have to be.
Well, I, I think the point, I understand the concern because it does seem backwards. But I think the point there is to have your ADU permit, you have to have a lease and all of that. Can you do that years in advance?
What do you mean years in advance?
Well, I mean, the code is, is pretty clear. You can build the ADU with the building permit, but you don't get your CO. You can't use it as an ADU until you get that, the ADU permit from the housing.
They're saying because, because we're only, we, we're only giving 40 permits per school district. Wouldn't you want to first clear the hurdle that you qualify for an ADU before you go to the building department to get a building permit?
And construct and certainly construct.
To get the ADU permit, you have to have a tenant.
Right.
In place. So to do that before you've actually built it, the challenge.
And it seems, it seems unrealistic that you can have a tenant years in advance. I, I think that the ADU, the code language is so strong. It's meant to be, you know, you can build this as a right if you meet dimensional regulations. But the next step is you have to get your ADU permit.
So then we've got the building department talking to the housing department? Because I know we're not near the, the numbers yet, but at some point we will be. Like how does the, but if the building department gives the 41st permit for East Hampton and we only had it at 40? Like, do you know what I mean? I, I don't, I don't know. It just.
That's a fair point. I mean, my, my, okay, two, two pieces. On the changing of the order, I'd be reluctant from changing what exists because it seems to have worked. In terms of the sharing of the information, I do agree that like, look, with Open Gov, we have that capability. The housing department keeps a very strict record of like the numbers and having them share that with the building department, I think is easily doable.
Can I just add one thing to this is potential guardrail there is that from, from CFO of your structure, you have six months to find a tenant or a certain timeframe or it has to be brought back into an accessory structure.
Exactly.
Yeah. So is that a guardrail that we put in there to make sure someone doesn't, just doesn't build what they think would be an ADU and then don't, doesn't use it as it? And then they have to restore to just an accessory structure.
But that guardrail is already in there. If you don't have an ADU permit, if you don't have a CO, it's, the code says this will be considered a legal accessory apartment. Very, very strong language. I think the flip side is I, I can't envision a case where the building department gives a building permit because it meets all the dimensional regulations. And then later the housing department looks at the lease and then make all, all the eligibility requirements that it wouldn't be approved. And then later the housing department looks at the lease and then make all, all the eligibility requirements that it wouldn't be approved. So I just don't think that there's a, a problem here. So long as, as Kathy pointed out, we don't issue too many permits, but
There's yearly renewals
Yeah, every year.
And yearly permitting, yearly, and then yearly inspections also.
And I'd listen, I'll be, you know, frank too. Like, look, if we start to get close to that cap, you know, that we're hitting it, the ADUs are working as a method to address the housing need. I think that that's the time for us to have that conversation as to like, look, do we want to increase the cap or not? Because if it's the, if it's the fastest and most efficient way for us to meet the housing need, then it's something that's working, then we should be looking to
And then I'll come back and say, I think that the cap should be weighted based on population or number of lots, you know, residential lots in that community as opposed to, you know, um, where I think it's a fair assessment.
I agree. I think having a flat cap for each hamlet might not be the best long-term solution.
So can I just ask regarding, just looking at the building permit, um, approval from the housing department issued from the applicants, from the person's point of view, I would hate to have to go through all the expense of getting a building permit and constructing only to find out what I was doing didn't qualify and I couldn't get it, then that, that's, I just want to not have people spend all that money and then somehow not qualify.
No qualified to get a permit.
But how would it not, the only, the only way it wouldn't qualify is if they didn't have an eligible tenant or they were somehow trying to use it illegally. I don't think there's discretion there with the housing department. I think if, if the, the tenant meets all the criteria year round, income qualifies that, well, in this case, they don't even have to, I don't think. But I think it's a, it's an automatic thing if they abide by the rules.
Okay. And then the other comments that, you know, I'm assuming it, like, because I don't really, didn't look at it last night. Must meet all the setbacks and coverage. That's in there, correct? And rented by a resident, the other comment today was a resident or member of residence family or an unrelated person?
Who's lived or worked in the town in the last five years?
Just want to clarify that.
So resident is defined as an individual who currently lives or works in the town of East Hampton, but may also include a person who is currently not a resident of the town, but has resided in the town within the past five years.
Okay. So then, and it doesn't need to be clarified. It's already clarified. And then it could also be a member of the residence family.
Well, I think that was the, the public comment was they didn't think the member of the, that the family member should be included there. I think that was the gist of it. I'm okay with a family member being included.
Yeah, I, I think that's why the desire is for this is multi-generational housing. Like you're seeing people's kids not being able to live here. So this gives that opportunity.
I think in fairness to the, the, the comment from the public, I think they were saying, well, if the family already lives here, they would qualify as a resident. But I don't see that this is a major loophole.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see harm in having it in there. No. Okay. So you could make those changes and maybe we, we just bring it back to next Tuesday's work session. Could either bring it back on Tuesday or the following Tuesday because it can't get noticed until the 18th anyway.
So it would be a single lot size threshold of 15,000?
Yes.
And then the Scrivener's errors that were corrected.
Yep.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're in the home stretch, Brian. Here, another patient man. He's used to zoning board. Goes to 1:00 in the morning. Oh, in the olden days. Ditch, so we're up to the ditch plains dune reconstruction update. Good news from Brian.
Is there somebody going to run the PowerPoint?
Let me, one moment.
Here's Chelsea.
Right on to you.
There you go.
So just to tee this up, uh, the town board has been actively in thralls of construction right now with the contractor, the ditch plains engineered dune. I want to thank council member Rogers, uh, for shepherding this part of the project for the permitting, uh, uh, community outreach phase. And now we're in the construction phase. And we just wanted to alert the town board and then also the members of the public where we're at. Brian Frank, our, uh, has, uh, our assistant planning director has been also navigating this project and spearheading it. And we want to just give you some quick background information, but also just some photos. If you haven't been out there to see what type of, uh, project it is and where we are at. Brian?
Good afternoon, Madam Supervisor, council members. Uh, Brian Frank from the Planning Department has, uh, Councilman Lees indicated. This is an update on the, uh, ditch plains, uh, dune restoration. Just a little background and I'll, I'll try to be brief. I know you've had a very information dense, uh, work session today. But a, a couple of things that are obvious about ditch plains, it's without question, um, one of the most popular, uh, public resources in the town. It, it's a beach that's, uh, used by probably every type of beach user group that you have, um, for, whether it's active recreation such as surfing or fishing or the most passive of, uh, beach uses, um, uh, some bathing, walking, uh, birding. It's used by everybody. It's, uh, unique in that it's a concentration of public access points. There's no place else along the ocean where you have three public areas where you can park and access the beach within a 1,200 linear foot, uh, stretch of each other. So it's, it's, uh, really a unique, uh, public resource and, and valued by pretty much every aspect of the community. It also has some, uh, unique vulnerabilities which aren't, which may not be a, as obvious. It is not, um, protected by high bluffs like the properties that it's flanked by on either side. As you go to the west in Shadmore and, um, Surfside, you've got bluffs that, uh, rise up, uh, 70 feet above sea level in some places. And, uh, east of, uh, Montauk shores, you, you have the same. So you have this, uh, lower area in between, um, with extensive freshwater wetlands. You have a complex stream system that flows north into Lake Montauk. And because of those low elevations and those wetlands, you also have some mapped, um, high hazard areas. You have velocity flood zones, um, that are wider in that section of beach than they are to the east or west. You have, um, a, a mapped feature which is known as the limit of moderate wave action boundary, which is a mapped area where you could have, uh, wave action, um, up to a foot and a half high. That boundary goes all the way up to the Forest Road in some places. And the map flood zones go throughout the ditch plains community, which is a high density residential area, all the way through the heart of ditch plains, up to and north of, uh, the highway. So it's
Sir, could you please quiet your phone back there? We can hear that up here. Thank you. Sorry, Brian.
Sure. Um, so it, it's, uh, in, in an area that has some, some, um, impressive natural protective features on either side of it, it lacks it. It's been a known erosional hotspot for years and it really took a beating in, um, uh, 2023 and into 2024 where the dunes that had protected that area, um, were, um, greatly diminished in size, nearly eliminated. The beach itself, um, was reduced down to what everybody calls the hardpan, uh, the, the clay lens that, that, uh, is part of the geologic formations out there. Um, so you had a, a thin veneer of, of sand left. And, um, if that area were left to recover naturally, I'm, I'm not really sure how long it would take if ever because you don't have the windblown sand that you have in the beaches and the dunes in the western part of town where beaches in Amagansett, um, take a hit over the winter. There's a lot of sand that moves around in that area and you can, you can watch the dunes recover over time. I don't know how long or if that would happen in this section if there wasn't some type of, uh, intervention. So to protect the resources of the community, the town undertook, um, the, the pursuit of a, of a, of a restoration project spearheaded by, uh, um, Councilwoman Rogers and, and Councilman Lees. And the intent was to, um, design a restoration project that would meet the criteria for, um, federal reimbursement under, under the Stafford Act. And that required, um, designing a dune of, of, um, engineered dimensions. It, it can't just be a one-time dune replenishment. It had, there are, there are criteria associated with that, um, with that criteria that, uh, requires, that required to make it eligible for reimbursement in the event of a, a federally declared, uh, disaster. We engaged the team of coastal science and engineering, uh, a firm based out of, uh, South Carolina, but with a, a lot of experience on Long Island, including the Bridgehampton Sagaponak, um, uh, erosion control district, uh, to the west of us. They were an excellent team, uh, to work with. And, um, the, the town team, which consisted of members from the town board, uh, Brittany Toladano from, uh, the attorney's office made, uh, significant contributions, uh, as well as, uh, members of the, um, town planning and, uh, natural resources departments. The, um, contractors also or the subcontractors also include, uh, LK McLean Associates as our local engineering consulting firm, who've been in, an integral, uh, part of the, the design team and have been, um, also key in, uh, the daily supervision of the construction out there. And, um, George Wallbridge, uh, surveyors who've been, uh, fantastic to work with. You'll see in, uh, some of the photos, the footprint of the dune has been staked out at the heel, uh, the landward edge as well as, as the toe. Benchmarks were set to mark the elevation to ensure that we were meeting, uh, the design criteria, um, that was, was developed by CSE and, um, a permit issued by, uh, uh, DEC. You'll see some sediment control erected to protect, uh, the freshwater wetlands in Reinstein Park as well as, um, the upland resources of the town on open space between ditch plains, uh, parking lot and, uh, Otis's, uh, road end. And I don't know if I should, uh, stop there.
No, we'll go to the next couple of slides and then we'll move on. Brian, just want to describe what this is.
Sure. This is, this is the, uh, design template. Um, this is, this was the design length of, uh, the project and the different shades are the different elevations. Again, we had to make sure that the, uh, dune was designed to stay above, uh, the mean high water line. We had to do some updates along the way because beaches are dynamic and the beach builds up a little bit and, um, it, it elevation decreases and as that happens, the location of mean high water changes. You want to place sand above the mean high water line so that it's not going into the, the latoral zone of the ocean and you're also not, um, losing it, uh, upon placement. So that, that, uh, this is the bird's eye view of the design plan. And this is the, uh, profile. And I think you'll, you'll see this reflected in the, um, in the, in the site photographs, uh, that come next. The dune is designed with, uh, a crest or in this case really a plateau. That's about 15 feet wide and with an elevation that's, uh, 16 feet above sea level and is, uh, sloped, um, both landward and, uh, seaward, uh, accordingly.
What you're going to see next in the next video is, if we can play this, this is actually, you know, this tidal surge during one, the second storm in January on one of the properties on the Forest Road. Uh, you can see that the tidal surge just completely engulfed the property in the structures that are there. The job that did take this was safe and sound. But you see how far that that dune system was now deep and effective by mother nature.
And you had floodings all through the neighborhood streets as well.
That's correct. This is just one of the ones we found at that time. Um, Brian, thank you. I'll take this moving forward if you don't mind, until we come to the end.
Sure.
What you're seeing here is pictures, uh, that we took. Uh, I want to thank Mark Abramson and Sean Shaw in the National Resources Department and also Andy Gates and Land Management for taking the aerial photographs before, during, and we will always do after. Uh, this is from 10:15, 25, before the, uh, the project started. They get our baselines on there. Next slide, please. As we roll, uh, then this is now looking west, I'm sorry, looking east, uh, towards, uh, Otis Ave. You see where those cars are and the surf and someone catching a nice wave there. Next, please. And then we turned around and then hence looked west. So you can start to see where the black hardpan is, uh, some of the, uh, uh, private jetties that might be there and how some, uh, the current dune system is looking. Next. We continue to move forward. Again, this is the house that got moved back, uh, that was inundated by that storm surge there. Uh, and then the town property to the right. Again, where that person is walking is where the dune system, engineered dune has been, uh, placed. Next. As we move forward, I want to thank Patrick Bistrain, uh, and, uh, Bistrain Materials for, uh, their work and, and also with Jason Keys and their operators. As you can see, they had, uh, make a bench plateau here. Uh, they came out after, uh, Dan Weaver and his staff of Wallbridge surveyors came back and then, uh, gave their benchmark and then also the toe and, uh, the toe and then as he, the heel of the dune then too. Made it easy to work on to get the slope profiles correct. Next, please. Currently there, uh, as, uh, as you can see, it's, uh, this in the far distance where the dune is starting to project here. This is coming from Otis. Next, please. The weather, and you can keep going through to the, to the video. The weather has been wonderful up until today. Very windy at times also. You can see in this video here, this is the portion where we're heading west. Now looking at how the construction process and methodologies were happening. Again, they put a, a, a bench in there for, uh, material. You can see the truck coming off the beach using a rock truck. They were dropping approximately anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500 cubic yards of sand a day out there. Starting the morning, you see the orange sign that we placed there, uh, for temporary closure of the beach. But in this, what we'll start to see in this drone photography is that the silt fencing, uh, that were the project limiting fencing, uh, and then, uh, providing access to their heavy equipment as they shaped the dune with not just excavators, dozers, rock trucks, and also just human interaction with rakes on there. But as you'll see, when we get down to Reinstein on there, uh, this is some of the profiles that were there. Again, there are minor interactions already with, uh, with the tide to the toe of the dune. And that's to be anticipated moving forward. Again, this is, uh, a protectionary, uh, for the large storms that might come. Next, please. As we continue on, uh, you'll start to see, this is by Otis Road, hand raking to get the slopes, the two to one slope with the 15-foot top section on there, width of it. It's the toe of the dune. Next, please. This again is from just last, was this last week-ish? Uh, as they start placing the sand, moving it down. It was a little bit of an arduous and, uh, and tight, uh, um, project zone, but again, the contractors have been working with great skill. Next. This is where the top of the dune system is. This is now going, uh, uh, facing west from, in front of, uh, uh, Reinstein Park. Again, what you're starting to see at the top of the dune here is how much the, of, of Aolian process. Did I get that right?
Close. Aeolian.
Aeolian process of the windblown sand. Thank you. I learned that from the zoning board from Mr. Frank here and too. It is actually, it blows and you, you lose inches of sand a day at times. So there's been a request of the, a request, uh, for the contractor to give a, a quote or a proposal for potentially putting on a burlap juke, natural material on top to try to hold the sand in place and also until the beach plugs take on there. We're waiting to hear back from that because again, a lot of sand is blowing. There will be sand, uh, fencing put at the, the toe of the dune. We're also investigating putting it at the heel of the dune too. Um, next, please.
And of course, Brian, uh, Brian, of course, David, when you're talking about the plugs, we're talking about, uh, the plantings, the
Correct. Sorry. Yeah.
That'll stabilize.
Beach grass that we'll be putting in now also. That's correct. Okay. Uh, next. Rolling through, just finishing it off, you know, some touch up work, uh, bolstering work here. Uh, this again is from yesterday. Thank you, Brian, for the photos. Uh, we couldn't fly the drones because of the wind that's out there, unfortunately, but, uh, we, we can get more and maybe put them on our socials. Madam Supervisor, uh, next, please. Again, this is a 16-foot dune on a two to one slope and it has changed, uh, you know, the, uh,
Appearance.
Yes, appearance. Thank you very much. I'm looking for the right word. Of, of the area, but it also has now changed the protective measures there. It is, uh, anticipated to interact with the water at some point. And again, there will be a slumping and a natural reformulation of the dune system that'll be there. Uh, that is anticipated. Next. And this is looking east. Next. That's the last one. So, uh, Brian, you want to, uh, next steps on here? I think they're approximately at about 15,000 cubic yards place, the 20,000 cubic yards. There, I've gotten emails during this meeting that we have to respond to about, uh, about some questions of the next, uh, some options, uh, and the construction of it. Uh, Brian, next steps to the board and just let the board know what, what to be anticipated.
Sure. Um, I, I, I do want to comment. I, I, my office received a number of calls when the project was started. There was a lot of concern about what the quality of the sand was going to be. And it might be obvious from the photos, but, uh, the quality of the sand is, is excellent. It's, it's really high quality beach sand. I've tried to be out there on a, on a weekly basis. I haven't seen any sign of, of silt or mud or gravel or anything other than, um, high quality beach sand. So the, the next steps would be to, to finish shaping the dune. Uh, there's Uh, there's discussion about whether, um, um, some covering is, um, warranted to reduce wind erosion, um, or will the beach plug, beach grass plugs be adequate? Beach grass does serve as a natural windbreak. Beach grass has evolved to trap sand. It's, it's in the plant's name. It loves to be buried in sand. That's what its Latin name means. And, um...
You've been waiting for that one, huh?
Yeah. Can you tell us Latin?
Can we ask David to pronounce that? No, you can't.
Be more fun if David.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that.
Amaphila breviligulata. And the amaphila means sand-loving. That's, that's, uh, so, um, but that will help hold some of the sand, uh, with or without, um, any type of matting on the surface. So those, those discussions are ongoing. Um, the, the rest of the dune has to be shaped. It has to be fenced around, uh, certainly along the toe and probably along the heel as well and, uh, planted.
We also would be adding signage, uh, to keep off the dunes, informational signage, uh, that actually states a new section of the code that was the town board passed in springtime, that they can't go cross over the dunes except for at locations that are historically done or beach paths on there. So it's all to the public. There is no walking on this dune. If you do, you are actually going against what the town code is and you would be penalized.
And it's very vulnerable right now until it naturalizes.
Correct.
It'll, it'll compact naturally over time. Um, dunes are fragile in general, but certainly when the sand is freshly placed like that, that's, it, it would, uh, the public has been, from what I've been out there, uh, cooperative, respecting the work area, um, which, uh, access is limited really for, for safety more than anything else. And, uh, hopefully that continues and, uh, uh, they respect the work that's done here and allow us to stabilize.
Completely have. Uh, I think, I want to thank the supervisor for, uh, coordinating and advocating for this project and particularly others in Montauk. Anything went from CCUM, Chamber of Commerce, to Dish Plains Association for funding. I want to thank Governor Hokel, uh, and her administration also for the grant funding. Madam Supervisor, that wouldn't have happened without you at all then too. Uh, so that, uh, to bring the financial, uh, werewolf to bear to get this action done, it protects the community down there. Uh, I thank you for that. We will come back and when this gets complete, uh, give another quick overview of that. It's okay. Uh, I don't know when that will be, but it's going to be relatively shortly, maybe in, you know, obviously in the next week or a week or a half is where the, uh, weather goes. Uh, one thing was interesting, I think has worked well on this project and we want to thank, uh, Walbridge Surveyors, is that we had, uh, pay stations, very similar to what we did with the Army Corps, every hundred feet. It got, uh, they came, they got the profiling in by the contractor. It got certified then by the surveyor. It had to be touched up. It got touched up. So it's certified to what the design is. Then that was a pay station. The contractor gets paid on that and then it's on the town, uh, to restore if needed or desired from that point. And I think that's a process that's worked well. It was new to the town or maybe even new to the contractors, but overall I think it was, it's a process that's been working out well then too. So Brian, I thank you for your efforts and the internal working team. I don't, that's all my comments I have.
I, I just had a quick question. So like, when do you think this will be wrapped up at the rate that we're going? When, when could the community expect the, you know, the beach plugs, the beach grass to be planted?
Well, before the end of the year for sure. I, I don't know how much, uh, sooner than that. It, it could be as, as little as a couple of weeks.
Great. And I just want to, again, thank David for taking over this construction, um, aspect of this project and, and your work, uh, and, and your knowledge that you gained from FIMP really is, uh, coming to good use. And, uh, really appreciate the, the oversight that you gave on the FIMP project really made you a qualified dune construction manager. And I think you should add that to your resume.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. Uh, but it takes a team, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just, it's a great project. I, I know when this, when I first came on the board, I think it was like five days in, we had that flooding in that area. And this project resulted from that. And so I, kudos to it. I, I, you know, I think it's important to manage public expectations as well on this. It's a sand dune. It will evolve over time. It will interact with the ocean, you know? There were certain constraints, some areas where the sea level is and where private property is. We're aware of those and, you know, it's to be expected. But overall for the security of this neighborhood from its risk to see flooding, I think this is an outstanding project. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Okay. We've made it to liaison reports.
I'm going to save mine for next week.
Yeah. If there's anything that can wait till next week, I think we should do that.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I will skip to some of the, uh, lighter pieces here. Um, just really IT is the one. Look, we, we continue to see, um, phishing emails go out, um, pretending to be coming from the town. Um, we have on each of the town websites, be it the Planning Department, the Building Department, um, kind of just key guidance for you to follow should you have concerns. Uh, again, the government isn't, uh, we're, we're not going to reach out and ask for a wire transfer. So if you're getting documentation saying that, please ignore it. You can make us aware that you've received it. That, that's good for us to kind of be on that page. But, um, if you have any concerns, go to the town webpage, uh, look at the department itself, read that guidance and contact the town department by phone as well. Um, please do not get tricked into that. Um, that's my most important update, I would say.
I will, uh, sorry, Tom. No, you. I will, uh, hold my laser report, nothing's necessarily timely until next week, Madam Supervisor.
Okay, great.
Kate? I am going to hold my liaison report until next week.
I will as well.
Okay, I just have something that, that I've gotten word from Change Hampton that they're really waiting to hear from us on, um, the presentation that they made. I can send the maps around. Uh, if you recall, they, they want to move forward.
Sorry, Tom.
With the addition, if you look, it's just to the south of Justice Court. You know, those, they want to include the, they want to complete the meadows and they want to plant some oak trees and some small shade fern beds under existing trees. Um, it's, uh, here in their presentation, they have a, a code which shows where was, you know, year 2026. They're looking, uh, because they've got to make their plans if that is something that the board, uh, supports.
I, I support it. I love fern beds. I really look forward to seeing how they evolve there. Uh, I think that, uh, the two, two, the two phases of the project so far are starting to turn out great. And, uh, as long as the maintenance aspect is discussed with, um, has been discussed with Steve O'Brien and, and his staff hours, I really look forward to seeing a fern bed. I don't know. I'm excited about that.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm supportive of this ongoing project. I echo David's comments, which is you look, long-term maintenance is, is the, the only piece I think we have to keep in consideration, uh, as this moves forward.
The other thing they wanted is they wanted to have a local builder who's interested in donating the two-by-fours to edge their garden in metal beds to help reduce edging time and help prevent more lawn grass spreading into beds. And they had agreed it would be untreated wood. Is that also something?
Yeah.
The board supports?
We, I think we discussed that last time.
We did when they were here. Yeah.
I, I'm okay with it. I just remain skeptical that untreated two-by-fours are going to remain a good edge for very long, but...
Okay.
Be honest, they're not.
Right.
I think you'll, you'll probably get five years out of them.
May, may, if you're really lucky.
I know one thing is that they'll define the bed for maintenance, the string trimming, where there has been a couple of oops moments on there. Um, but, uh, yeah.
I just wonder about a metal edge or something that's more permanent, but I'm supportive.
Okay, great. Um, and I just wanted one other thing. I can, I'll talk, we can talk about the stop signs at Hans Creek next week. And I just wanted to let folks know, we got word from the Nature Conservancy that there's, they're looking to do a burn on Shelter Island. And it's a prescribed burn that they're having this Friday, although they're leaving the window open because of weather, uh, and wanted to give us a heads up and so we could notify our residents. We're going to be putting that on social media. So if folks see smoke coming from Shelter Island, it could be the, uh, the burn at Mashomac. All right, resolutions.
It's my privilege to offer Resolution 2025-1569. This is approved trail installation at AIX Hamilton H Preserve, as discussed in the work session on November 18th, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution 2025-1570.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next meeting. Uh, actually we could do this Thursday. Yes, please. Thank you.
Kate, you're up. Yes. Resolution 2025-1571 is to accept a grant of scenic and conservation easement. Three Georgia Association Road LLC. A public hearing was held on November 20th on the proposed grant of the scenic easement. Resolve the town, uh, board here, the town hereby accepts the easement listed below. The grantor is Three Georgia Association Road LLC. Uh, the date of the easement is October 27th, 2025. The location is Three Georgia Association Road and the reviewing agency is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1572 is a grant of a scenic and conservation easement at Seven Outlook Avenue in Springs. This public hearing was also held on November 20th, 2025 and resolve that the town hereby accepts the easement listed below. The grantor is Susan Lehman. Uh, the date is October 24th, 2025. Location is Seven Outlook Avenue Springs. Reviewing agency is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1573 is to adopt a local law amending Chapter 255-141E1, personal wireless facilities tier one. This is where as the town board held a public hearing on September 18th, 2025 to consider a local law, um, entitled the, for amendment of the chapter 255 zoning of the East Hampton Town Code in order to amend 255-141E1, personal wireless services. After considering the proposed local law and comments received in the hearing, the town board believes the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the town. Whereas it is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and Chapter 129 of Town Code, be it resolved that proposed local law is hereby adopted. To read as follows, details below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1574, this is a budget modification for the Community Housing Fund to increase revenue budget line for real estate transfer tax in the amount of $150,000 and to increase expenditure budget line for subcontractor costs in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?